Six, Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting this morning. At this time, I'd like to call on Reverend Betsy Haas for an invocation. Reverend Haas, thank you as always for being here.
My pleasure and my privilege to be with you this morning.
Yes, ma'am.
Let us pray again. Gracious Lord, have God...
We thank you for this day, for this incredible weather, as we like to call it, "local summer." And thank you for the sunshine and for the clarity of the skies. And we pray that you would bring that same clarity into this meeting today. Father, this is important business that we're about to do. It's a wonderful day to celebrate our county employees and our veterans. It's a wonderful day to lift up everything that happens in this room, to thank you for the presence of these commissioners, to ask for your discernment, to pray for safety around our county, our first responders, and all who served Dare County. And Father, we have been reminded of how fragile this place is, as we've been watching houses float away in the sea. So we just pray that hedge of protection around our homes and our residents. But especially, Lord, in this moment, we pray for your wisdom and your guidance, that everything that is said here today would be of your agenda, not ours, would be of your wisdom and not ours, and would be pleasing to your ears. And altogether, all of God's children said, amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Our pleasure, Agent. Public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and law. Like to amend the agenda to add item six B. There's two proclamations that are before you this morning that we didn't have a chance to get on the agenda, and one's indigenous people's day, and the second is indigenous people's month. So I'd like to amend the agenda to add that. So the motion is their second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. County manager?
You serve as the chair. Item one on the agenda is the chair's opening remarks.
All right. Thank you, county manager. As most of you know, I like to start out with a little humor. I had heard recently this gentleman was very stingy with his money. And just before his death, he made his wife promise him that she would have him buried with some $50,000 he had saved up over the recent years. And his wife, of course, reluctantly agreed to do that. At the funeral, before they closed the casket, she sneaked up to the casket with a small wooden box and put it in the casket. And her friend said, Shirley, you didn't bury that money, did you? And the wife said, of course I did. I'm a Christian. I can't lie. She said, you mean you just buried $50,000? And the wife said, I sure did. I wrote a check.
Matt found that real cute.
Folks, needless to say, the last several weeks, we have really had some difficulties on the island here, especially in Buckston and Rodanthe. And, you know, we had two storms, and they weren't even direct hits. So this is the third wave of destruction that we've had just in the last 60 days. Just to give you a breakdown of the homes, we've lost a total of nine homes. There's been eight homes in Buckston and one in Rodanthe that we recently lost. The total assessed values of these houses as of 2025 was $5,457,200. These houses were built between 1973 and 1998. They vary in size from about 1,130 square feet to 2,188 square feet. One of the nine property owners has a mail address in Dare County. Three have property owners somewhere else in North Carolina. Three have Virginia addresses, and two have Maryland addresses. So this is what we've lost so far, just in this last weather situation. A total of nine houses, eight in Buckston and one in Rodanthe. I'll talk a little bit more about that again in a minute. Cleanup. I can't thank Superintendent Halleck enough for him and his staff for the cleanup that's been done already, just in Buckston and Rodanthe. And he's limited, he has limited staff, as you all know, with the government shutdown. He doesn't have much staff. He's called in this past Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and he had like 40 employees show up Friday. And of course, they're doing this on their own, and it's been an arduous task for them. The debris field in Rodanthe was heavy for the first few miles, and then it tapered off. And it stretched approximately 18 miles north to Avon. That's a huge debris field. Severe conditions persisted Friday and Saturday with minor flooding and ocean overwash in Buckston and significant ocean overwash on side streets in Rodanthe. I saw that myself firsthand this past Friday, Thursday, and Friday. Several private streets with public right of ways in Rodanthe were impassable due to the water depths. There was a major cleanup operation that took place Friday, Saturday, and Sunday in Buckston and Rodanthe, with his crews having heavy equipment deployed. And in Buckston alone, they loaded 140 truckloads of debris that was removed from the beach and staged at their lifeguarded beach parking lot. Significant quantities of additional debris persist north of the first groin, and they will be, his crew will be working on that this week. There were some petroleum odors at the Buckston formerly used defense site. They were moderate during Saturday's high tide, and they became strong on Sunday. As a result, his staff and the volunteers that he had had to avoid that stretch of the beach. So they'll get out there sometime this week and deal with that. Additional structures that were collapsed, ocean overwash, and hazardous conditions from Thursday through Tuesday are potential. As you know, today starts another high-tide situation that could bring some more damage to both the Buckston area and Rodanthe with knocking down some potential other residents. So we just have to hold our breath and keep our fingers crossed. I'd like to talk a little bit about the Buckston Civic Association, and Brian Harris just walked in the door. Brian, thank you for being here this morning. I can't say enough about the Buckston Civic Association, how engaged they've been, how involved they've been in prior cleanups from Aaron, and they're working on a follow-up volunteer cleanup from this last two incidents that we've had. Seven of the eight homeowners have private contractors removing debris. And that's good. That's substantial. They're moving that to the main road so that our contractor can come pick that up. And we'll be working with them diligently this week and throughout the week for those private contractors to get the stuff off their property. And then the Buckston Civic Association, they'll be there as well. Not sure what date yet, because I think they were looking towards the weekend, but we're supposed to have some bad weather. Needless to say, there'll be Johnny on the spot as soon as these contractors clear the debris from those seven of those eight homes that have contractors. So anyway, like I say, I can't say enough for the Buckston Civic Association, and they're on top of this. Their people have been down there every single day, and they showing their concern and doing what they can to help these residents. So Brian, please express our appreciation to the association for all of y'all's diligent and hard work, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. Then the last, last but not least, enough negative. I could not be more proud this morning to honor and celebrate an extraordinary human being that has reached a milestone that'll take place in his life on October the 27th. 100 years old, Mr. Osborne Chuck Hester. Mr. Hester's life is woven in the very fabric of Dare County and the Outer Banks. At the age of just 17, he answered the call to serve our nation during our Second World War, becoming one of the area's youngest soldiers and today, our oldest living veteran on the Outer Banks. His courage, his dedication, his resilience are an inspiration to each and every one of us. After his military service, Mr. Hester went on to build bridges, quite literally across our region while serving as concrete foreman with the T.A. Loving Company. Let me tell you about the projects he worked on. Mans Harbor Bridge, the Alligator River Bridge, the Wright Memorial Bridge, bridges that continue to connect so many of us today. He later joined the National Park Service, continuing his public service until retiring to care for his beloved wife, Naomi. He served 21 years as a volunteer firefighter with the Roanoke Island Fire Department. He was also a member of the Lions Club, treasurer at the Haven Creek Baptist Church, and recipient of the state's highest honor, the Order of the Longleaf Pen. Throughout his 100 years, Mr. Hester not only contributed to the infrastructure of our community, but also to its spirit, embodying service, hard work, and kindness. His life stands as a testament to perseverance, excuse me, faith, and dedication to others. Today, on behalf of the Dare County Board of Commissioners, it's my privilege to present a certificate of appreciation to Mr. Hester for his century of life, service, and leadership. Mr. Hester, thank you for all you've done for Dare County, for your country, and for the generations who follow your footsteps. Congratulations on reaching this remarkable milestone, as we wish you continued health, happiness, and peace in years ahead. (applause). It is my honor and privilege to present this to you. What a great human being you are and what you've done for our country. I couldn't be more proud.
I appreciate it.
Congratulations. Frank, come on in here. Let's get a picture. Pardon?
My baby brother.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Mr. Hester, can you hold that right there?
I can hold it right here.
All right. Next one. Thank you. Frank. Thank you. All right. I think there's a couple of folks I want to, well, I know there's one. Well, yeah, there's a couple of people I'd like to introduce that thank you for being here this morning. That's the vice chair, Ron Payne, for Board of Ed, and Lisa Lloyd. Lisa, Board of Ed member. Thank y'all for being here. Ms. Test Judge, our representative on the North Carolina Transportation Board. Test, thank you for being here this morning as well, too. If I overlooked somebody, I apologize, but I think I touched base with everyone. With that being said, county manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
That completes my remarks.
That brings us to item number two, and this is the service pins. Our first service pin this morning will go to Hosey Wilson to get his 10-year pin. So you all know Hosey. I don't know how much you keep up on... What he does and how he does it, but you all have met him. He's been up here before you a number of times. In Hosey's previous life, he was the tax administrator in Bertie in Chawan County and came to us as the assistant tax assessor in 2015, and then became our tax assessor in 2020. You think about what he does and how he does it. I don't know if any of y'all bought a home recently or have refinanced a house recently. How long did it take you to get your appraisal? Well, take whatever that experience is, multiply it by 45,000 properties, and whatever the value of that property was, divide it into $27.5 billion, and you'll see what Hosey does every day. He's the one that determines the values of the property. He's the one that monitors the economy. He looks at the contracts. He does all the work, follows all the statutory formulas, does everything he's got to do to determine the value of those 45,000 properties. Now, that's important to you, but it's important to all these other folks because the value of those properties determines our tax base, and our tax base determines the revenue that you all have to spend to run the county. And that revenue's almost 60% of all the revenue that we get. So what he does is extremely important, is extremely detailed, is really hard to do, and there aren't a lot of people out in the world that can do it. And we're lucky to have Hosey here doing it for us, I can promise you. If you go back six or eight years ago and you look at places, other places, you look at the, I think it was the city of Charlotte, maybe it's Mecklenburg County, they didn't have a Hosey, and they messed it up, and it cost them lots and lots of money because they had to do it again. This isn't something you just sit down one night and play on your computer a little bit. This is like painting the Golden Gate Bridge. As soon as you finish it for one revow, you got to start again to do the next one, and it takes years to compile the data and do the work, and Hosey does all that. I can't say enough good things about what he does and how he does it. You know, when people appeal, we go to the Property Tax Commission. They all know him up there, up in Raleigh. They rely on him. They talk to him. We very rarely have any issues when we get there. We're almost always right, and we're almost always right because Hosey and his team do it right. They do it the right way. They follow the rules. And when we get there, we have our things together. That's important for us, again, because it keeps everything fair and it makes sure that we have our properties valued correctly. And where we don't, I mean, with 45,000 properties, if we miss one, then we fix it, and he has no problem fixing them, and has fixed the ones that slipped through the cracks or some problem he didn't know about. So again, can't tell you enough good things about what he does and what he does for Dare County. He does have a life. He's got a wife and two kids, and they do things. He enjoys outdoors with his boys. He's got twin boys. You know, they're NC State grads, but they're still okay, and they like to go out and do their thing. And Hosey, until recently, was probably a Carolina guy, so everybody's changing their point of view after the last few football games. So again, I can't say enough good things about Hosey and all the things that he does for us that no one ever sees and no one ever knows about, but he's there, and he does a great job, and you're much appreciated. Thank you for 10 years and counting on 10 more. (laughter) Next, Jennifer Branch will receive her 10-year pin from Hosey Wilson.
Thank you. Well, I have the great privilege of presenting Jennifer Branch her 10-year pin. I'd planned on Robin Etheridge, her direct supervisor, presenting, but she could not, so she drafted some remarks, and I'm going to kind of complement them with mine, if that's satisfactory. Jennifer and I started on the exact same day. We were in the same orientation. We were probably sitting there wondering what we were doing here and kind of wondering what everybody else's story in the room was. Believe it or not, we have another individual in our office who also started on that day, and she couldn't attend today, but she's been there with us as well. So we have three that started exactly the same day. I think it was like the third week in October, and I think that says a great deal about our organization. So that said, I'll read a few of Robin's remarks because she directly works with Jennifer, and it outlines where she came from and how she got where she is. Because our roles, my role has changed since beginning. Her role has changed since beginning. We do different things than we started out doing, but we work very closely together. And the job that she does ensures the accuracy in what we do. She started 10 years ago as a legal assistant in the Land Records Department. She came from an attorney's office, which is a great background for that type of work. They analyze every transaction that comes through the county, whether there's consideration involved or not. And that takes an extremely, an extreme amount of detail and detail-oriented meticulous work, finding things that might not be correct before these documents are recorded, things of that nature. I'm just going to read a couple of Robin's paragraphs, if that's okay. She's got a lot of, she uses a lot of color in her stuff, so it kind of, I don't know, for emphasis or whatever. It is certainly her careful attention to detail that makes her the best and enables our department to defend what we do. Through her record-keeping, we were able to follow up with taxpayer inquiries and confirm prior decisions that were made regarding their property. She has served the taxpayers well and has juggled many duties, sometimes for extended periods of time, to cover the office in the absence of additional support. Jennifer is ever-steady and sturdy and one to be counted on. So in 2023, we had a long-tenured employee retire, and she was responsible for the Land Transfer Department, which is a division. It's a one-person department, and it's housed in our department. And so this individual retired. Jennifer applied for the position, and really, there was no one more qualified to do that work. So she assumed that responsibility, and I'll say that in the past, that department was difficult to manage. It was more autonomous. It was not really incorporated in the Land Records Department. And at the time, I was not interested in keeping it. So I was thinking of ways to get rid of it. But, and I'll talk about land transfer in a minute, but Robin and her staff and Jennifer all came to me and said, we want it. And I said, okay, well, you're going to work it. And what they have done has created a seamless transition with people that willing to work together, and I really look at that as one of the success stories that have come out of this past 10 years. So that is very important to me because having that information, Jennifer, since the 2025 revow, Jennifer and I are very, in very close contact, as you can imagine, because I need to know everything there is to know about every transaction that comes through, and I feel like I do. And I couldn't do that without the work that she does. So land transfer, we are one of the fortunate 10 counties that had legislation passed back in the 80s that allow us to levy a 1% land transfer tax on transfers of property that involve consideration. That revenue, just the last fiscal year, was $11.3 million. That's revenue. The consideration paid for these almost 4,000 transactions was $1.16 billion. That was just last year. She issued every land transfer number because these deeds cannot be recorded with that, which means she reviewed all those transactions. So we get 65% of that revenue from the county side. The other 35 goes to municipalities, and they go, it's used for capital projects. So she's responsible for all of that revenue. So it's really important to what we do. So that being said, she does a wonderful job. Her coworkers are back there. Raise your hands. Y'all don't have to hide. And her husband Wesley is right there. So they're here in support of her today. So I just want to commend Jennifer. She does not want to be up here. She is terrified. I told Skylar to bring smelling salts if she fell out. You just hold on to the table. But it's really important to recognize these accomplishments, and I'm proud that you're up here today. I'm proud of the work you do, and if you didn't do the work you did and weren't as diligent about doing it, we... And they go, it's used for capital projects. So she's responsible for all of that revenue. So it's really important to what we do. So, that being said, she does a wonderful job. Her coworkers are back there, raise your hands, y'all don't have to hide. And her husband Wesley is right there. So they're here in support of her today. So, I just want to commend Jennifer. She does not want to be up here. She is terrified. I told Skylar to bring smelling salts if she fell out. You just hold on to the table. But it's really important to recognize these accomplishments. And I'm, I'm proud that you're up here today. I'm proud of the work you do. And if you didn't do the work you did and weren't as diligent about doing it, we, we would all be in worse shape. So I can promise you that. Last thing I will say, it's just on a personal level. Jennifer is, is a baker. And I mean a baker. She makes wonderful things. I'm a big fan of the sweet potato biscuits and things like that. So around the holiday time, if you're interested in things like that, I'm sure she would be willing to help you. On top of that, she is a big fan of the Grinch. And I'm not sure if it's year-round or if it's just at Christmas time. Because I went to her house to pick up a cake for Christmas and there were some inflatable Grinches outside, but there were a lot of Grinches inside. And when I say if there was one, there was a million of them. But I'm kind of like the Grinch. My family would say that I am too. So I, I'm okay with that. She is a huge Pittsburgh Steelers fan. She's quite the football fan and she plays in our fantasy football league. And about three weeks ago, she beat me pretty good. Now, I've won two years in a row, so I'll see you in Week 13 again and hopefully my lineup will be a little bit better. But, all that said, Jennifer, thank you very much for your 10 years. And I'm not going to ask for 20 more, but I appreciate everything you do and so does everybody else.
Next on our list is Alex Khan, who will receive her 10-year pin from Jenny Collins.
So I'd like to introduce Alex Khan for you. Alex was actually born in Montreal, Canada. She has almost an exclusive law enforcement family. Both her mother and father's side of the family were all in the Royal Canadian Mounted Police. But she's lived in the United States since 2010. And she completed an associate's degree in pre-law and liberal arts and a bachelor's in psychology with a focus in forensics. And was intending to follow that family tradition of law enforcement and then life took her in a different path. You know, a few things happened and as she was contemplating what she was going to do, she happened to be watching Third Watch with her father. And she goes, "Heh, I think I could be a paramedic." And her father goes, "No, you need to go the law enforcement route like the rest of the family." Well, Alex will tell you that that's probably not the first time she hasn't listened to her father and decided to follow the path of EMS. So, not knowing what to do, and now is about 2014, she did what everybody does. "Well, we're going to Google it. How do you become a paramedic?" And she enrolled the same day that she was Googling how to do that into Lenora Community College Paramedic Program. And she graduated the following year. And so it's July 2015 now and we hired her right out of the college program. She will proudly say that Dare EMS is the only EMS agency she's worked with, the only EMS agency she wants to work with. And we promoted her to lieutenant in 2023. Alex is currently on a quick-response vehicle in one of the districts as a district supervisor. And she also does a lot with our uniform projects. And so she keeps track of everything, works with the vendors closely. She has been married since 2023. Her husband is also in our department. So they have a blended kid, a family of five kids amongst them. And they range from six years old to 18-years-old. And the oldest sons, which are twins, both have just gone into the US Army. So, life is getting a little changed for her with a couple less kids at home, but needless to say, she does stay quite busy between us and her family life. So Alex, I want to thank you very much for 10 years of service and many, many more. So, thank you.
Next, if Angie Hooper would come forward to receive her 20-year pin from Shanna Fulmer.
Welcome this morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's my pleasure to both introduce Angie Hooper to you and to commend Angie on 20 years of service with Dare County. Dare County made a really smart decision in hiring Angie back in 2005. I guess I'm not going to be able to make eye contact with you. Angie was first hired in our Fleet Maintenance Department as a warehouse technician. And what we quickly discovered is what Angie lacked in experience and knowledge, she made up for with dedication and hard work. Fast forward to 2017, Angie was promoted to Administrative Assistant for the entire Public Works Department. I really don't want to stand here today and give you a laundry list of duties that Angie performs. Yes, she answers the phone. Yes, she pays bills, et cetera, et cetera. Instead, I'd like to give you a couple of examples of what I think makes Angie a great employee. First and foremost, Angie is Team Public Works. She believes in our mission and she understands the important role that we play in this community. Angie also never says no. The answer is always yes. I don't care what it is that is asked of her, whatever task or project is put before her. She is, she's going to say yes. She's not going to say no. And that is really important coming from a supervisor because there's always a hesitancy when you have to ask somebody to step outside of what they're typically involved in to embrace something new. And I appreciate her for that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Angie's really funny. We, we laugh a lot and I think that's a very underrated quality to have in an employee, especially in public works when it can be very stressful. Phone calls aren't always pleasant, but we can count on Angie to make light of it and make our day better. The one story that I have for you about Angie that kind of sums up who she is. Last year, Dare County got hit with snow. Probably not snow like Matt's used to, but for Dare County, it was snow. We hadn't been hit for snow, with snow in seven years. And where the rest of the county was so excited because they were going to get a day off. Public Works knows it's just another day for us. Now, as an admin assistant, Angie very well could have stayed home and enjoyed her day off. But she called me and she said, "Shan, what can I do to help?" I said, "Well, I'm getting ready to deliver coffee and donuts to the guys." And she said, "I'm coming in." And that's what she did. She delivered coffee and donuts because she knew our guys were out there shoveling snow in the cold. So, Dare County appreciates your work, but Public Works is just full of gratitude and thanks for everything you've done. And we love you. And I need five more years out of you.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
I'm not going anywhere.
Next, if JT Slawn would come forward to receive his 20-year pin from Jessica King.
Welcome this morning. Thank you. Good morning. JT is one of our supervisors with the distribution team. In the time that I've worked with him, I have been impressed with his dedication to his work, from the small tasks that he does every day to something major that keeps him in the field until 3:00 AM. His positive attitude is something to be admired. He brings this attitude with him every day to his employees, his coworkers, and the customers that he deals with in the field. Thank you, JT, for everything that you do every day and congratulations on 20 years.
Thank you very much.
Next, if Karen Patton would come forward to receive her 25-year pin from Beth Bradley.
Hey, good morning. I'm Beth Bradley. I'm the Adult Services Supervisor at the Dare County Department of Health and Human Services. It is my absolute pleasure to stop by this morning to express our gratitude and appreciation for Karen Patton. 25 years, 25 years. Do you guys remember what you were doing 25 years ago? So, so long ago. And Karen has stayed with us in Adult Services. She's ageless though, so it is fine. She has been an Adult Services social worker for 25 years. So we're so proud to have a chance to honor her today. Karen manages cases for in-home aid services, community alternatives, program clients, and special assistance in-home clients. All of these types of cases involve helping older and disabled adults continue to be able to stay in their home rather than having to go to placement, to go to assisted living or a skilled nursing facility. And I think that, you know, something amazing about this is that, you know, at the end of a long day, you want to go home. At the, you know, when you are tired, when you're sick, you want to go home. And Karen gets to do that for older and disabled people in our county. Because of social workers like Karen, older adults in our county are able to age in their home and they're able to do that safely and with support from our agency. Karen really knows what she's doing and she has had extensive work experience. We often ask, "What does Karen say about that?" Or, "Has anybody asked KP?" So we're going to be in a real pickle when she retires, but I feel like I could probably get 25 more years out of her. She is an authority in many of our programs. Her job knowledge is unmatched. She helps the team. She brings her policy opinion to any difficult case. You know, we have to apply these new policies that we get. And sometimes we get our policies after they are required to be implemented. And Karen always jumps in and helps us and helps us understand what the implication is for our, for our clients. She is always willing to help us with that. So I promised to keep this short, but I will say that Karen has many admirable qualities, but one of my favorite is to watch her when she feels like someone is not getting a fair shake or someone's not being treated kindly. She is tough when she needs to be, but she's also thoughtful and kind. She looks out for her coworkers. All of her coworkers are here today to celebrate her. And she looks out for the agency. She looks out for her supervisor. So, thank you for everything that you do. People are better off in this county because of you. So, and I'll take as many years as y'all give us, still. Thank you, Karen.
Next, if Spencer Gregory would come forward to receive his 25-year pin from Sheila Davies.
Welcome this morning, Sheila.
Good morning. It's truly a pleasure to be here this morning to recognize and honor someone who has dedicated, who has dedicated 25 years of outstanding service to Dare County, Spencer Gregory. Now, if you know Spencer, you know he's not one to seek the spotlight. In fact, it took some real convincing to get him here. But I told him this kind of milestone deserves more than just a pin dropped in an inter-office mail. It deserves recognition and appreciation in front of peers, friends, colleagues, and family. Spencer began his journey with Dare County in September of 2000, shortly after graduating from the University of Georgia. I used to think when you were red, it was for NC State, but I learned more that, nope, it's Go Dogs! And moving to the Outer Banks in that same year. He started as a leisure coordinator in the Kittleby Hills Division. From day one, it was clear that sports and recreation were not just part of Spencer's job, but they are part of who he is. Even today, sports remain a passion and a way of life for Spencer. Taking a step back, thinking in 2000, kind of like Beth, oh my gosh, 25 years ago, the sporting world was buzzing. The Sydney Olympics opened with a spirit of unity and reconciliation. Vince Carter stunned the world with his unforgettable dunk of death over Frederick Weiss. And the US baseball team claimed Olympic gold that year. And Ken Griffey Jr. made history as the first player to hit the 400th, his 400th career home run as a pinch hitter. That was the backdrop when you first joined Dare County. And certainly since then, things have been changing and you've been making your own history. In 2002, Spencer was promoted to Leisure Specialist in the Roanoke Island Mainland Division. And a few years later, in 2005, he stepped into the role of Leisure Program Supervisor, which he held for 18 years until October of 2023, when he was promoted again to his current role as Public Services Director. Through every chapter of his career, Spencer has remained focused on one thing: serving the people of Dare County, especially its youth. He once shared, "I like to know that the work I do is beneficial to all citizens, especially youth. It's a tremendous privilege to be in the position I am today, and I do not take that for granted." He's also quick to point out the incredible colleagues and teams he's worked with over the years. According to Spencer, Dare County is lucky to have such a great, hard-working, and dedicated employees. I've worked with so many caring and committed individuals and we've also had tremendous volunteers and officials across public services. When asked what's changed most over the last 25 years, Spencer pointed to communication. From barely getting a couple of emails maybe in a week when he first started, to now navigating constant digital messaging and social media outreach, the landscape of public services has transformed and Spencer has adapted to it. Spencer's commitment to community is matched only by his dedication to family. He lives in Mania with his wife of 13 years, Doris, who's here today with us. He's the proud father of his son Jack. He's a sophomore at UNC Wilmington. A stepdaughter, Emma, who attends Appalachian State. And stepson Carter, who lives in Charlotte. Outside of work, Spencer enjoys RV camping, traveling, being outdoors, and of course, playing any sport or game with friends, staying true to the passion that brought him to this field in the first place. Spencer, on behalf of Dare County, thank you for your 25 years of service, your heart, your leadership. We're fortunate to have you and we're looking forward to seeing what the next chapter brings.
Next is our Employee of the Month, and Matt Matico will make that presentation.
Welcome, Matt.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mike come down from, and his team is coming in. Surprise.
Well, I woke up this morning, this wasn't on my schedule.
So I have the honor of presenting the Employee of the Month to Mike Kerr on behalf of Matt Hester. I'm just getting the opportunity to work with you, Mike, so I've compiled some of Matt and what others have shared, so. Mike, or Computer Mike as he is known, has a reputation for providing exceptional customer service. He's the go-to person to address issues with computers, printers, scanners, and the county phones. You've mastered the expedited PC replacement, getting the process down to a couple of hours, all while you're imaging drives for all the network servers in the background. Occasionally, you've even been called on to do electrical repairs, so. In your nomination, you were commended for going above and beyond for the Elections Department, working after-hours and traveling to off-site precincts. Your responsibilities included supporting over 25 laptops for the election cycle and onboarding the floaters and the staff members with the process. This is a quote. "Mike is committed to supporting the county's IT needs, making him an invaluable asset to our team and deserving of this award." Today, in Matt's absence, Mike is even running this meeting just to show you his flexibility and commitment, so. Please join me in acknowledging Mike Kerr as Employee of the Month. Please join me in acknowledging Mike Kerr as Employee of the Month.
Before we go into public comment, those of you that received an award, please go right out here with Kate to get a picture made.
While we're doing that, County Manager, I failed, I failed to recognize Matt Neal, Commissioner in Southern Shores. Matt, thank you for being here this morning. We appreciate you.
If you have public comment this morning, raise your hand. I'll recognize you. If you've signed up, I'll call you off the sign-up sheet. When you come forward, please state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light on the podium that comes on when your time begins. There's a yellow light that will come on when you have about a minute left. And when the red light comes on, please conclude your remarks. On the list, I have Spotswood Graves.
Spotswood's welcome this morning.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you for the privilege of speaking. Also, thank you for your service that you give to our county. Having served on not elected positions, I know that meetings are just a small part of the work that you do. It's always inspiring to hear about the people who serve our county with the longevity pins and also the Employee of the Month. I am Lewis Spotswood Graves. I live in Kill Devil Hills, and I have lived and worked in Dare County since 1978. Each year here, we experience hurricane season from June 1 to November 1. Some prepare and follow the weather more closely during that time. Others do not even know a storm is threatening until they see neighbors making preparations or they see the excitement on the Weather Channel. Each year around the end of November, we breathe a sigh of relief when the hurricane season ends. I'm sure you do, Mr. Woodard, Commissioner Woodard. But another hurricane season will not end on November 30 in our country. It compels us to be aware of its presence. Our beloved United States faces hurricane right now, more deadly than any named storm in my lifetime. We face threats to our democracies, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, the rule of law, allowing and counting the vote, respectful civil disforce. Systems long in place and norms long followed are being destroyed. Elected officials trade insults and seek to divide us, and we are now in the middle of a government shutdown. Where is our leadership in both parties? I have lived through Watergate. It astounds me, I'm now 82 years old, it astounds me that there are a whole lot of people that don't know about this. I mean, they are much younger than I or than you. That scandal brought down President Nixon. The news today, I believe, is much worse than what we were dealing with in the 1970s when I moved to Dare County. Our country has lived through the American Civil War. Abraham Lincoln was president before and during that time, the first Republican president of our nation. In his first inauguration in 1861, before the Civil War began, he said, "I am loath to close. We are not enemies but friends. We must not be enemies. Though passion may have strained, it must not break our bonds of affection." The mystic chords of memory stretching from every battleground and patriot grave to every living heart and hearthstone all over this broad land will yet swell the course of the Union. When again touched by, surely they will be, by the better angels of our nature. In 1863, in the middle of that conflict, at Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, he made the speech that has been called the most powerful speech ever made in the United States. It begins, "Four score and seven years ago, our fathers brought forth on this continent a new nation, conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all men, and women, of course, are created equal." Later, in that same short speech, he said, "It is rather for us to be here dedicated to the great tasks remaining before us, that from these honored dead we shall take increased devotion to that cause for which they gave their last full measure of devotion. That we here are highly resolved that these dead shall not have died in vain, that this nation under God shall have a new birth of freedom, and that government of the people, by the people, and for the people shall not perish from the earth." Finally, he closed his second and last inaugural address made only a month before he died with these words. "With malice toward none, with charity for all, with firmness in the right, as God gives us to see the right, let us strive to finish the work we are in, to bind up the nation's wounds, to care for him who shall have borne the battle for his widow, his orphan, and to do all that may a church achieve and cherish a just and lasting peace among us and all nations." I believe President Lincoln still speaks to us today. We have work to do. Our work requires not guns, but peaceful involvement, daring speech, forgiving hearts, standing for noble principles. Our work involves being informed citizens and voters holding our elected officials, representatives responsible for the trust we have placed in them. We have a history of coming together to meet trying times. These are those times, I believe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Spotswood.
Is there other public comment this morning? Yes, sir.
Brian Harris, thank you for being here this morning.
Brian Harris, Buxton, North Carolina. Sorry about the attire. Carson doesn't have a collar shirt on either, for the record. I don't even know where to start. I'll start about, rewind it about two weeks ago before what we're dealing with now, but I spent some time in DC at the Department of Interior with Secretary of Interior Doug Burgum's team, some time at the EPA with Chief, the Chief of the EPA, Lee Zeldin, his team, and then some other White House staff, just to discuss the FUD site and, you know, maybe the beach stabilization stuff. We had some great conversations. Also, met with a few different lobbying agencies. And as I was leaving DC, it kind of occurred to me that I'm the best lobbyist we got. By the time I brief them and catch them up to speed, it's just, we just don't have the time, so. I've registered in the District Columbia as federal lobbyist. It was approved by the U.S. Congress. I'm now official lobbyist for the Buxton Civic Association and the Beach Buggee Association. Last week, I, you know, appreciate all you guys being there. Appreciate all the help. I was on the ride up there today, and Dustin had already called, I believe Noah too, Mary Allen. You know, cleanups are underway. Nine houses went in the ocean. There's 13 more in the ocean. And I just, the weather forecast this weekend is absolutely horrible. There's a storm after that. I just, I don't even know what to think. I did want to come up here and thank you guys for everything, and just, it's just, I'm never going to forgive myself for walking by that sign every day for a year and waiting a year to start the Buxton Civic Association. You know, just a lot of people lost a lot of things. A lot of people are going to keep losing a lot of things. And that there's this, I need to talk to the governor. I need to talk to the governor, not you guys. He needs to talk to me. He needs to come and talk to the Buxton Civic Association. We need to make that happen. The scalping that's happening right now, it keeps aligning with the jetties, it's heading north, and Highway 12 is going to drop. That motel's toast. I sat in that threat and structures meeting here two weeks ago with Reed Corvette. You know, a lot of people online didn't like what I had to say, and in the chat group. I told everybody in that group, we're going to lose six houses this next storm. We're going to lose three or four more this weekend. There's just no way around it. I just, we've got to be smart with this nourishment, and, you know, retreating is definitely any answer. You know, these houses got to go. I talked to Halak over the weekend. That's one of the things I'll be lobbying in DC for, is funding to buy these houses out. That's really all I got, and just, you know, I know that we pan over to the residents, the Annex Center. I imagine there's going to be some, some comments, redheaded stepchild, nobody's helping us, and I just, that couldn't be further from the truth. I appreciate everything you guys have done. I don't think, people down there don't realize how many times I talk to Bob Watered every day. I talk to Mary Allen almost every morning. Bobby calls me all the time. I mean, it's just, this once a meeting, this meeting once a month doesn't... The amount of work that takes to get any of this to come to fruition is just unbelievable. And I just thank you guys all. We'll get through this, but Buxton's about to look a lot different. It already does. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate your comments, and thank you for what you do.
Any other, any other public comment? Seeing...
After comment.
I'm sorry. Wait, yeah.
He's going to do it after public comment.
Okay, any other public comment here? Any public comment in Buxton?
Yes. Our first speaker is Wendy Mundon.
Welcome, Ms. Mundon.
Hi, thank you, guys. Thank you for being here and having us. I just want to touch on something a little, a little different. So Mr. Allen spoke about tax values, and I just, I'd like to bring that up for just a minute. So, you know, Buxton's losing, losing money right now, which I'm sure that y'all are aware of. But we're losing money for our fire, our rescue, our beach nourishment, sanitation, and of course Dare County. You know, we all have those taxes that are coming in, and with the loss of houses, it's a loss of income for, for all of these things. Our fire department here in Buxton, in my opinion, is one of the best in the county. I may be biased, but I really appreciate everything that they do. We rely on them for public safety and for their community support. With the lost tax dollars, they're losing money for their resources to help our community. So between Tower Circle and Hatteras Avenue, I went through, pulled the numbers from Dare County taxes for 2025, and they've lost $3,290 just with these nine homes that have fallen. As Brian just said, we're looking at 13, maybe more, coming in the near future, so that number's going to continue to grow. We're also looking at potential for, you know, the motels, which is a large amount of that tax dollars. So Buxton brings in roughly $195,000 a year for their taxes. So, I mean, losing 3,200 isn't that much, but when we start adding that into everything else that could be gone, I really don't know how our fire department functions, and so I'm kind of speaking on that right now, but I'd also just like to touch on the fact that we're also losing money for our beach nourishment, which I'm sure y'all are aware of. But we're losing tax dollars for sanitation and for our Hatteras Island Rescue Squad. It's the trickle-down effect that we're getting right now, and I guess I just publicly wanted to say, you know, I'm concerned with how this affects Buxton, Hatteras Island, as I'm sure we all are, and I just wanted to come on the record and kind of say that, because there's great concern here. So thank you. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you for coming here and for looking out for us. And Buxton Civic Association is going to keep doing what we do and pushing forward. Like Brian said, we're not retreating, we're standing strong, and we just want to figure out the best way that we can all move forward and stop this terrible thing that's happening to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mundon.
Our next speaker is Brett Barley.
Brett, welcome this morning.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm just going to preface this with, I'm going to try not to get worked up, but it's been pretty hard talking about all this last few days. You know, just, obviously, what we've seen in the last week is unprecedented, even compared to what we've seen in Rhode Anthony. Five houses in a day, eight and 48 hours, nine total, you know. And on top of that, like Wendy said, you know, not only are we losing that tax revenue from the, from the houses going down, all the houses in the surrounding area have no rentals, they've had to cancel their rentals, some of the motels have been closed, the visitors that typically are here this time of year to spend money are not here. This, and this isn't going to stop. Like Brian said, I mean, I've been pretty sick to my stomach looking at the, the weather forecast, just like, can we not get a break? I know that, I think something that's hard as a community, for those of us that are aware and that watch the swell in the ocean, and, you know, I've grown up here, and fishermen and surfers, when you look at NOAA data on the Oregon Inland Buoy, on Cape Hatteras East Buoy, these were not historical swell numbers. You know, the, the Weather Channel and Fox Weather, whatever, all the media says, like, you know, the historical, these two storms, and that's why we're seeing this. That's not the case. This is not, the ocean that we saw bad or Buxton this week was not of concerning numbers. I think, whether this is the correct analogy or not, P Island in this situation is almost like, would typically be the canary in the coal mine, as far as like, okay, well, P Island's bad, so like, how bad is it going to get somewhere else? And as you've noticed, P Island has been withstanding pretty much most of these storms other than one day during errand. And P Island has always been our weak point. And when we get a real nor'easter and a real swell of concerning numbers and storm surge, P Island is leveled. The fact that P Island is fine is hopefully a visual aid for the rest of y'all at how severe the situation is in Buxton. You know, the concern, the numbers that we had that took out Buxton this past week, we had swell heights of around 10 feet to 12 feet at 13 seconds. I know that isn't something that you guys would understand, but the taller the swell and the longer the period, the stronger it is. And these nor'easters that we get, you know, now through the winter and into the spring can reach heights of 15 to 18 feet at 15 to 17 seconds, and you're talking swell heights that are double or more of what we saw. Storm surges that are far stronger than what we saw. What, what we are seeing is not historical storm surf and swells taking out of town. What we are seeing is a town eroding away because it was built on lands that those jetties shored up. And these are conversations that we have had, and that you guys know at this point. As Brian said, you know, as that jettie continues to erode, we lost more of it during this last storm. As it continues to erode, the beach continues to move back. And we are out of a place where it's, you know, for Buxton, it's a state of emergency. It's like I said back in August, before any of this happened, we were in a state of emergency without it being declared, so before things hit the fan, those of us in the know knew that this was coming. I think that I would encourage the county to look at ways in which you could implement some sort of drastic measures to help save that. This isn't about saving rental properties. This is about our town, this is about our highway, you know, the historical landmark of the old Lighthouse Site. Like, this is our history, and we cannot just let it all fall into the ocean. And it would not have gone into the ocean if the jetties had been maintained. And so now we're in a dire situation. I'm, I'm going to spitball one idea that will probably send alarm bells off or bobby out, but we, you know, in the past have dredged out of the sound or dredged from places on land to pump it onto the beach in dire situations. I think, given the situation with the sandbars through Buxton, it's not that we're trying to build out a beach, we need sandbars. If there's a... If there's a, if there's some sort of sand there that's firm for those houses and the pilings to not shift amongst, they can withstand a lot. But if there's no sandbar, which there hasn't been, uh, since the nor'easter two weeks ago, they will fall and that's what we saw. I think if you implemented some sort of emergency dredging from the Canadian whole side of the sound over onto the beach and let the swell fill it in itself, you don't need bulldozers or whatever, just pump it out and let the swell fill it in, there are ways that we can mitigate this loss. And it's just an idea, something for you to think about. I'd hope to have conversations with you guys if you want to talk about that. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, Brett.
Our next speaker is Alan De Falla.
Welcome, good morning, commissioners. How are you?
Fine, welcome this morning.
Thank you. Just the concern that I have, and, and this is probably, I don't know if this, if this commission could spearhead this, but I'm wondering, um, the, who's responsible for this environmental damage when these houses fall into the ocean? Are the insurance companies liable for that? It's a, you know, I, I don't know if there's an answer to it, but, you know, I recently read an article where the average household has 300,000 items in it. And I watched these houses, because I live in Buxton, collapse into the ocean and they have to be filled with everything, otherwise the insurance companies don't want to pay. But allowing the insurance companies to say the house has to fall in and dilute the ocean before they'll compensate the owners or do something else seems to be a bit ridiculous. And I don't, I don't know that you folks can solve that problem. I don't think you can, but I think that this community's got to be one of many up, up and down the eastern seaboard. Doesn't have to just be North Carolina, it could be New Jersey, South Carolina, Florida, whatever. You know, Florida said yesterday that because they had three inches of rain or three and a half inches of rain, they were suffering severe beach erosion. Okay? I, I don't know how we can fix that, but something's got to be done to stop all this, dumping all this stuff into the ocean. Period. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further comment from Buxton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item five on the agenda.
Before we go there, County Manager, um, we have the pleasure of, um, having with us this morning, uh, Ms. Jennifer Freeman, who is the Regional Four Manager from the North Carolina Division of Military and Veterans Affairs. And she'd like to make a presentation this morning. Uh, Ms. Freeman, would you please come forward? Thank you for being here this morning, Ms. Freeman.
Thank you so much. So I'd like to, I have the honor and the privilege of presenting a certificate to Osborne Chuck Hester. So if he would like to come up. Mr. Hester and I had the opportunity outside to have a family reunion of sorts because I'm a veteran as well. So I just want to present you this certificate, North Carolina Department of Military and Veterans Affairs Certificate of Appreciation. This award is presented to Osborne Chuck Hester in recognition of his 100th birthday in his service to the United States of America and the state of North Carolina. His devotion to dedication, his devotion to duty and dedication are in the highest traditions of service and reflect great credit on himself and the United States Army. This, the 22nd day of September 2025 by Madam Jocelyn Mallett, Secretary, North Carolina Department of Military and Veterans Affairs.
County Manager, before we continue, um, I'd just like to congratulate Brian Harris. Brian, congratulations on that lobbyist appointment. I know you will, um, work extremely hard for the citizens of Buxton. This is a, this is an inside piece. I may change my mind about going with you to Raleigh in that pickup truck. That's an inside, inside between us, um, County Manager.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, that's, brings us to item five on the agenda. Patty Atsaulan's here to, uh, present a resolution in support of honoring Dare County's veterans by participation in Operation Green Light from November 4th, 2025 through November 11th, 2025. Patty?
Good morning.
Patty, welcome this morning, Patty.
Thank you, good morning. So, um, today we bring forward a proclamation recognizing Operation Green Light 2025. Dare County has a long and proud history of supporting its veterans. Through the work of my office and the Veterans Advisory Council, we have a couple of members here, Dare County provides critical assistance, advocacy, and resources to more than 3,400 local veterans and their families. Those are actually the ones that are registered through the VA with healthcare or claims. We have more than that here, but, um, Operation Green Light is a national initiative led by the National Association of Counties to show visible support for veterans by shining green lights throughout all communities. Dare County participated in 2023 and 2024 by illuminating county buildings and this year we're once again encouraging all residents and businesses to display green lights during the week of November 4th through 11th. This proclamation officially designates November 4th through 11th, 2025 as Operation Green Light Week in Dare County and reaffirms our commitment to honor and support the men and women who have served our country. With that, Mr. Chairman, I respectfully present Operation Green Light proclamation for your consideration.
Thank you, Patty. County Manager, would you read that proclamation, please?
Whereas Dare County recognizes the necessity and value of employee dedicated veteran services officer, whose role includes aiding and advocating for local veterans by helping them to navigate the complexities of veteran specific benefits, resources, and programs, and ensuring they receive the benefits and assistance they deserve. And whereas the Dare County Board of Commissioners established the Dare County Veterans Advisory Council in respectful recognition of the service and sacrifice of all of Dare County veterans as represented in all six branches of the United States military. And whereas the members of the Dare County Veterans Advisory Council assist Dare County veterans by serving as a liaison with the community and in coordinating services and activities that benefit local veterans and their families, and also solicit information and provide updates about activities honoring veterans in our community. And whereas the residents of Dare County have the utmost respect, appreciation, and gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and community in the US Armed Services and believe these service members should be granted specific recognition. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices made by those who have served in the United States Armed Forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And Dare County seeks to honor these individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in various organizations such as the American Legion, Marine Corps League, Military Officers Association of America, Veterans of Foreign Wars, religious groups, and community organizations, as well as through civil service and by volunteering at various community based events. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and currently 40% of the trans transitioning service members stationed in bases throughout North Carolina plan to stay in North Carolina upon their transition to civilian life. And whereas studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and that active military service members are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas more than 3,400 veterans who are currently residing within Dare County are receiving services provided by the US Department of Veterans Affairs that includes healthcare, compensation, and pension. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to participate in Operation Green Light for veterans by shining green lights throughout their communities to let veterans know they are seen, appreciated, and supported. And whereas Dare County participated, participated in Operation Green Light for the first time in November 2023, and for the second time in November 2024, and an array of Dare County government buildings were illuminated with green lighting to demonstrate the community's appreciation and support for local veterans. Therefore, be it resolved that having officially been designated a Green Light for Veterans County, Dare County announces its upcoming participation in Operation Green Light 2025 and hereby declares November 4th, 2025 through November 11th, 2025, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform. Therefore, be it further resolved that in, in observance, I'm sorry, in ob- observance of the Operation Green Light 2025, the Dare County Board of Commissioners encourages its citizens to recognize the importance of honoring all those who make immeasurable sacrifices to preserve our freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 4th, 2025 through November 11th, 2025. This is the sixth day of October, 2025.
All right, pleasure of the board.
Motion to adopt.
Motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman to adopt. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Burris. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Patty, thank you for this resolution, but more importantly, thank you for what you do for our veterans in Dare County. You're, you are a blessing and, and I hear unbelievable stories of how well you help our veterans, uh, seeking financial assistance and, and whatever. And I can't thank you enough for what you do.
Thank you for letting me do this job and thank you for approving this.
Yes.
And you're going to make me cry, so thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
That brings us to item six on the agenda. We have David Beal, Marcy Chavez, and Jessica Sands here to present a proclamation designating October 2025 as Dare Arts Month in Dare County.
Welcome this morning. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you so much for having us. We appreciate it.
Um, my name is Jessica Sands. As you know, I'm the Executive Director of Dare Arts. And, um, we're celebrating a amazing milestone this month, this year is the 50th anniversary of Dare Arts in Dare County. Um, we've had quite a year, we've sort of spread out the celebrations over the year. Um, and this month specifically is, um, the month that Dare Arts was incorporated with the state and the county. So, um, we're excited to be here for this special day.
Yeah, I just wanted to also share Rebecca Watkins, our president, couldn't be here today, so I wanted to make sure you knew how she appreciated, uh, this proclamation. On behalf of Dare Arts, uh, it's a broader organization. We thank you so much for this proclamation this month. Uh, just to second what Jessica mentioned, Dare Arts has been around 50 years doing great programming throughout the county, uh, doing work with cancer patients, with dementia patients, as well as the schools. Uh, we obviously have the courthouse, which has been a great, uh, cooperation from the commission and the Dare Arts Council. I appreciate all your support and help with the courthouse project. What a great landmark, uh, that we, we keep the gallery in today. So appreciate your partnership on that and we look forward to the next 50 years. We've had a great 50, but we're also planning some new things for the future and look forward to participation with you all in that as we move forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I believe we have a proclamation and, um, County Manager, would you read that, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas in 1975, a group of local leaders met in Molly Feering's living room to found an arts organization that would eventually introduce thousands of schoolchildren and adults in Dare County to music, dance, theater, painting, sculpture, poetry, and literature. Initially, this organization was called the Sea and Sounds Arts Council. Whereas articles of incorporation were filed with the state of North Carolina on October 13th, 1975 to form the Sea and Sounds Art Council, which is now known as the Dare County Arts Council. Whereas October 13th, 2025 marks the 50th anniversary of the establishment of the Dare County Arts Council. Located in the beautiful Outer Banks of North Carolina, Dare Arts is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to encouraging arts in Dare County through advocacy, enrichment, and opportunity. Whereas the North Carolina Arts Council recognizes the Dare County Arts Council as the designated county partner and leader of our six county region, which includes Beaufort, Dare, Hyde, Martin, Tarrell, and Washington Counties. Whereas the Dare County Arts Council represents over 100 local artists in their art gallery located in the historic Dare County Courthouse in downtown Mani, North Carolina. And whereas the Dare County Arts Council enriches the lives of both Dare County residents and visitors through engaging artistic programs, educational opportunities, and entertaining community events. Whereas the arts and humanities are a vital part of the county's economy and the creative economy drives tourism, commerce, and supports local workers. And whereas the arts are everywhere in our lives, adding depth and dimension to the environment we live in and shaping our experience daily. Now therefore, the Dare County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Dare Arts Month in Dare County, North Carolina, and commend its observance to all citizens. This month, may we celebrate the importance of arts in the fabric of our vibrant community and for the next 50 years and beyond. This is the sixth day of October, 2025.
Pleasure of the board. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Burris. Any further comments? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank y'all. Thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you so much for the support.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, item 6B that we added to the agenda are two proclamations. One is a proclamation recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. And the other is a proclamation from the North Carolin, the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, American Indians Committee, proclamation, uh, for National American Indian Heritage Month. These were presented to us by Marilyn Morrison, the chief of the Roanoke Hatters Indians of Dare County. She could not be here and with your permission, I'll read these proclamations.
Yes, you'll start with the, uh, the Peoples' Day, if you will.
Uh, this is a proclamation recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas the lands now known as North Carolina were originally inhabited by indigenous peoples, including the Roanoke Hatters Indians, other Algonkin speaking communities who have lived here since time immortal. And whereas indigenous peoples have for centuries maintained rich cultures, language, traditions, and governance systems that have shaped the history and heritage of this region. And whereas the Roanoke Hatters Indians of Dare County, direct descendants of the coastal Algonkin peoples, continue to preserve and share their history, culture, and traditions, contributing to the civic education and cultural life of our community. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day provides an opportunity to recognize and honor the resilience, contributions, and sovereignty of native peoples and to educate the public about the lasting impact of indigenous communities on the history and development of our state and nation. And whereas Dare County values diversity, respects all cultures, and is committed to building a community where the contribution of every people are honored and respected. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Robert Woodard, Chairman of the Dare County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Dare County, North Carolina, and encourage all residents to reflect upon and honor the history, heritage, and contributions of the indigenous peoples. In witness whereof, I set my hand and seal this the sixth day of October, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve by the Vice Chair. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose a sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Then the second is a proclamation for National American Heritage Month. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples. And whereas the contribution of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. And whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as a part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August, 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historic activities have been planned. Now therefore, I, Robert Woodard, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Chairman of the Dare County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November as the National American Indian Heritage Month in Dare County, North Carolina, and urge all our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. In witness whereof, I set my hand and seal and cause the seal of Dare County to be affixed as the sixth day of October, the year of our Lord, 2025.
Good. Good. There's a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by the vice chair. It's been seconded by?
Seconded.
Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, that brings us to item seven on the agenda. Donna Creef's here for a presentation on the Dare County Community Housing Task Force update.
Welcome this morning, Donna.
Good morning. Good morning. Mr. Chairman Woodard, Board of Commissioners, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak to you this morning. I'm Donna Creef. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Outer Banks Association of Realtors, but this morning I'm standing up here speaking to you as the chair of the Dare Community Housing Task Force. I have several members of my task force here with me this morning. Ms. Test Judge Betty Selby, Mitchell Bateman, Duke Garrity, Ron Payne, Malcolm Fearing, who is the vice chair of the task force, as well as Matt Neal over there. I appreciate them coming out this morning and being here for this presentation as well. And Mr. Woodard, Chairman Woodard, thank you so much for your guidance in establishing the task force and the time that you've put into it over the course of the past few months. County Manager Woodard, I mean, Outon and Skylar for her assistance with me in preparing the agenda in the minutes. You will recall that I was here in February, and I did a presentation then, and that presentation was on the Dare Community Housing Task Force report that was adopted by the task force in December of two thousand twenty-four, and I'm here this morning just to update you on where we are with that and the progress that we've made in implementing some of those recommendations that were included in that report. The first thing I want to talk about is the East Carolina Community Attitude Survey. That was a survey that was fully funded by East Carolina University. Dr. Herr and Dr. Jaeger did some public outreach meetings in Dare County. They did a survey of all the property owners and the general residents. We heard a presentation from them at our June task force, and they have done a second component of that survey that just closed in September, just last week. That was focused on local government employees, more of a workforce component. It was shared with all of the local governments, with the Board of Education, the Outer Banks Health, as well as the chamber shared it. And so those outreach, so that will be used as we proceed forward in some of our outreach activities moving forward. We've also created some outreach materials. I believe that was included in your packet. That's just to help with the relatability and to present what's familiar in some of the existing developments that we have in Dare County, some of the smaller-scale multifamily developments, some of the ADUs. Those materials will be put on poster boards, and they will be distributed by brochures, and we will have them to use moving forward, and that is being paid for by a grant that the Outer Banks Association of Realtors secured. And so we're appreciative of those efforts to get those materials underway. And I do have the presentation. If you guys want to get it up, I'll get this going. Let's see if the technology will cooperate with me this morning. Maybe, maybe not. Sit on. Thank you. Okay, so that's where we are. Let's get caught up. So the first recommendation I want to speak about, investigate development of housing units on government-owned land. The sites included in the public property inventory list in the two thousand twenty-four report appendix should serve as the starting point for this investigation. So the two thousand twenty-four report had a list of public properties that we had identified that held potential for development of housing moving forward. We have subcommittees of the task force, and one of those subcommittees is our plan task force. And after we adopted the report in two thousand twenty-four, we went back through and ranked those properties on topography, zoning, infrastructure availability, adjoining land uses. And so we've established some of those there that held greater opportunity than some of the other ones. Now that we have that list ranked, we hope to move forward with some concept development plans and pursue options of how those properties may be developed. One of the things that's changed recently is that there's been a change in the North Carolina Building Code. The residential code allows you to build up to four units per structure under the residential code, and so that's something that we hope to factor into our evaluation of these properties. Here is the actual list. You'll see the ones in yellow are highlighted. Those are the ones that ranked higher with the committee's ranking. The one in orange is just indicative that it's in the town of Kill Devil Hills, and that's the Run Hill property where the teacher housing is. I want to be very clear that these are just concept plans that we're developing. If we get to the point where there's something that appears to be worthy of pursuing, which we think there will be, we would definitely have to come back to the county since it's your land that we're looking at.
Donna, I hate to interrupt.
Go right ahead.
But along this lines, as you very well know, the Secretary of Interior is advocating potential government land to turn over to local governments for potential essential workforce housing.
Yes, sir.
Will that be, in addition to these that we've identified, will that be something that the nonprofit would reach out and try to?
Absolutely. We sent letters. You sent letters.
Right.
But we also, at the plan subcommittee, talked about some of the federal lands as well. They're not included on that list because that was something that developed after the report was adopted. But we have identified some sites that we feel do have potential, and we're hoping that the federal government moves forward on that as well. We're monitoring that as we go forward.
Great. I just wanted to make sure the public was aware of that.
Right.
Thank you.
So again, that was the list, and let's see if I can get my presentation back up. There we go. So the next recommendation, implementation of a study. I'm ahead of myself. Implementation of a study on additional housing units for teachers and local government employees, including a project on Roanoke Island as authorized by two thousand and four legislation. This study should include an analysis of the potential need and desire among local government employees for housing assistance. So that last sentence there is one reason why the ECU people have done that second phase of the Community Attitude Survey. And then the vice chair and I, Mr. Fearing, and I have also met with the Dare Education Foundation, who oversees the existing teacher housing, to discuss, you know, where they are, and they recognize that we're moving forward and that we're in the process of establishing a nonprofit, and we discussed ways that we could work with them, and we certainly didn't want to do anything that's contrary to what they are doing. Yes, sir, Commissioner Ross?
I just want to make sure I'm clear that this study would designate housing assistance for local government employees and teachers only. If you are not employed by the government, you would not qualify for any assistance defined in this study.
So when you say "study," I'm gonna talk about the two thousand and four legislation, which is very narrow in that that language is teachers and local government employees.
Okay.
The study that we, that the ECU folks have undertaken was a questionnaire that was sent to local government employees, to the Board of Education employees. It was also sent to the chamber and their members and the Outer Banks Health. So the discussions at the task force have been, the two thousand and four legislation is in place. It's been successful. We know that it works. That's the low-hanging fruit, if you will, so let's go after that.
Right. So all the chamber members are excluded from benefits from the two thousand and four Act.
That was the way that the General Assembly adopted the language. Yes, sir.
That would be a yes.
We, let me add, but we have also worked with Senator Hannig to try to get some other legislation that would expand on that.
Right.
And so that has got hung up in the General Assembly, if you will, but we continue to work on that.
So as of today, there are no others included other than?
Not in that legislation. No, sir. Okay. So again, that legislation contemplates a third project on Roanoke Island, and so we feel that that's an opportunity to pursue since that legislation is already there, and there has been success in the past. But eventually, we feel that, you know, the private sector will be the second wave after we get something going with the public sector, if you will, Commissioner Ross. The next recommendation is request funding from Dare County to contract with the UNC School of Government to assist task force with the establishment of a housing nonprofit agency. Yes, sir?
I asked Malcolm just before the meeting whether we were going to contract with UNC School of Government, and you had indicated you weren't aware of any, but what part of UNC School of Government does this reference? Is this DFI, Development Finance Initiative?
They are involved with the Our State, Our Homes program. They're a component of that. And so that was just a very general statement there. We did not indicate that it would be DFI. I'm aware that the county had worked with them in the past.
Yes.
So we put that recommendation in there. The report was adopted the middle part of December of two thousand twenty-four, and shortly after that, we had applied to the Our State, Our Homes program, and we were notified that we had been accepted into that. And so that occurred after the report and after this recommendation. But as part of that, Our State, Our Homes, which we've been working through, and Mr. Fearing is on the core group there, as well as Matt Neal and Andy Garman, it's, we're moving for that. We've been through our third session. We go until March of next year.
So I apologize, Donna.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure I track. The contract it stated in this bullet point is with something called Our State, Our Homes at the UNC School of Government?
So it's not a contract. The recommendation talks about the idea to contract, but we haven't pursued that because Dare County and the community task force was selected to participate in the Our State, Our Homes program, which is a program under the umbrella of the UNC School of Government, the Carolina Cross One Hundred. So they've been in existence for probably five years. They've studied substance abuse. They've studied transportation, and this time their focus is on housing. They selected fourteen teams from across the state of North Carolina, and the Dare Community Housing Task Force was selected based on an application that I submitted. The task force voted on it, and we said, let's submit one, and we got selected. So we've been participating in that, and the most positive thing about that participation is, is that I serve as the project manager. The project manager was, is, all of the teams were, received five thousand dollars to pay that project manager, or that could be used towards a project, if you will, to do something to further housing in your community. I have voluntarily not used that five thousand dollars for Donna Creef herself, and I'm, that's being used to hire an attorney to help the formation of the nonprofit organization. It's paying for the legal fees.
So it's going to an attorney?
An attorney that has extensive, extensive experience in housing nonprofits. He's helping us with the articles.
That was a joke, Donna.
Yes, sir. I know. But there's also, I submitted the paperwork last week for another five thousand dollars for an implementation award that we feel fairly confident we're gonna get that's also gonna help with that formation of the nonprofit. So where the recommendation talked about a contract.
Right.
We didn't have to do that contract because we were selected for the Our State, Our Homes, which came with ten thousand dollars that we're using. So that request in that, that was in that recommendation to come to the county, we delayed doing that because we knew we were getting the ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
But we're here today for another request, so if you'll, I'll get to that in just a second. But that, that's important because that ten thousand dollars is money that's coming from the Our State, Our Home program.
And there were four, just to be clear, there was only fourteen programs?
Fourteen teams, yes.
That were selected for that, out of the hundred counties?
Um, there is not just counties. I think there were probably eighty-seven applications. A lot of the other teams that are there have more than one county involved in them.
Okay.
And some of them are further along in the process with housing. Some of them are actually, you know, many years involved. There's four or five of them from the western part of North Carolina. There's one from Carterick County. There's one from Warren County. There's some from around the middle part of the state. But yes, there's only fourteen teams, and so we're moving forward through that. So the nonprofit is quickly becoming a reality thanks to that ten thousand dollars from the Our State, Our Homes session and the money that we have and the experience that we were selected when to participate in. Let me get caught up. So the request today is based on this recommendation. Startup funding options for a full-time nonprofit or department that focuses on housing should be identified. Partnerships with local governments are essential, but there needs to be an independent nonprofit agency that works with local governments but is not under the direct organizational structure of the local government. So that's why we're here today, to talk about the assistance that we think is necessary from Dare County to move forward with this. So we've got the attorney, we're organizing. Now we need to move from organizing to functioning. Why is this request different than what's happened in the past? It's because of this nonprofit component. The research that the task force has completed, all of the successful housing programs in North Carolina involve a nonprofit as the fundamental organization that leads the housing work. That's true in the other portions of the United States as well. It would be a nonprofit recognized under the state of North Carolina, and it would have the 501(c)(3) tax-exempt status. That's part of what the attorney is working on, is filing that Form 1023 that gets that tax-exempt status. So any positive revenues that are produced from the housing would go back into the nonprofit, back into the community. It's not profits that's being funneled into the corporate structure or of a corporation or to the, or to any LLC. It's to the nonprofit. It's going back into the community. And so that is the fundamental difference of why the nonprofit is different than what's happened in the past.
Donna?
Yes, sir.
Inform the board the importance of grant funding from a nonprofit standpoint versus a task force standpoint because of the fact that the nonprofit can go after state and federal funding.
Right. So again, the nonprofit is a legally-recognized organization under the state of North Carolina. It can do business. The task force is a paper tiger. It's not even a paper tiger. It's a paper kitten, if you will. We're a nonentity. Once we're organized as that nonprofit and recognized under the state of North Carolina, we can secure grants. We can go after grants. We can talk to private corporations and financial institutions about financing. We can do fundraising, and so it's a very important step. It's a for-real thing. It's a tangible organization, whereas the task force is just, at this point, a group of very dedicated individuals sitting around the table trying to solve an issue. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
So what is the task force? We sat down in, I think it was in April, again, with one of the subcommittees that the task force has, with Chris Son, and he led us through some very intense discussions about, you know, how we needed to organize and how a nonprofit functions. And so we have twenty-six members on the task force now, and we're, the bylaws that have been drafted for the nonprofit have thirteen board members. It's a public and private sector representation, two-year terms. Again, it would be recognized, or we're filing the paperwork for the 501(c)(3) IRS tax-exempt status. So those public sector appointments, there would be nine board members, one from each of the towns, two from Dare County. Hopefully, one of those would be a Hatteras Island representative, and one from the Board of Education. The way the bylaws are drafted, it says that they could be elected officials. The local governments make the appointments. They could be elected officials. They could be staff, or they could be community representatives who have knowledge or experience that would be beneficial to the housing foundation. The reappointments would be made by the local governments. The language also in the bylaws recognize that local governments can choose not to participate, or if they participate and then they decide they want to drop out, they can certainly do so. That's entirely up to them if they If they choose not to participate, then the Board of Directors of the Dare Housing Foundation would appoint that representative from the private sector. So the public sector would have four members to make up the remaining 13 members. These representatives were voted on by the task force when we met earlier in September. They are myself, Mr. Fearing, Susan Flyth from the Cape Hatters Electric Membership Corporation, and Taylor Sugg from Town Bank. We have talked to Mr. Sugg and Ms. Flyth and they are both willing to serve on the board. Both of them expressed an interest and a willingness to do so in recognition of the importance of the issue and we appreciate their willingness to serve. We will also have subcommittees that help and advise the Board of Directors and that really do the, the, the important work that leads up to the, and makes the recommendations to the advisory board, to the Board of Directors. So again, as I mentioned in response to Chairman Woodard's question, it would be recognized and incorporated under the North Carolina Secretary of State's office. Then we can, we can go about doing the business, soliciting grant funding, undertaking fundraising activities. We envision some of those fundraising activities will also include sponsorships from businesses from the other local governments in Dare County, towns, property owners, individuals. We will also do outreach to private, to the non-resident property owners and to the visitors so they can be aware of the issue of housing in Dare County and they can also be solicited for donations. We will proceed with the development of the concept plans for that list of properties that was on my earlier slide. And we will also work to cultivate partnerships with other public and private agencies for projects and funding opportunities. So moving forward, again, the paperwork for the Housing Foundation is, will probably be filed later this week or certainly later this month, based on my conversations with the attorney. We would be recognized hopefully by the Board of Commissioners as the lead agency for housing. The board would make their appointments to the Board of Directors today for the Housing Foundation. The Board of Education is considering this at their meeting next week. The towns are also discussing their board appointments this month. The town of Nags Head, the town of Manio and the town of Duck have already made their appointments. The other local governments are scheduled to do so at their meetings this week and next. We are asking the Dare County Board of Commissioners for startup funding of $200,000 annually for two years, as well as the designation of office space that we could use and the continued use of the conference rooms here in the building for our work. So we would organize and we would transition away from the task force. Again, the specific request, just to go over that one more time, the appointments from the board today, the approval of our startup funding, the designation of our, of the offices in your packet as well, with my presentation, I included a budget. This is an estimated budget. I looked at the tax records for some of the other local nonprofits just to get an idea of their expenses. And so there is some, some basis of those expenses that I put in there. The bulk of the work will be used for professional services. There has to be an accountant, you know, we have to establish a bank, banking and accounting. We need to set up a webpage. We need to do all of that stuff before we can get moving forward on the business of housing. You will note in there that there is a line item for staffing. However, I anticipate that the, the board will continue to be volunteer-driven for several more months. We're, we're just not to that point where we're, we're sure of how the staffing can be utilized and the best skills that that person would need to have. And so I included that in there just for purposes of the budget and recognition that eventually staffing would be a component of, of a budget for the Housing Foundation, but recognizing that it would still be volunteer-driven for several more months. And I'm going to stop right there. So I, I think, you know, the, the money isn't going to Donna Creve. We would have to wait until we were the organized and we were recognized under the state of North Carolina and that we had our tax federal ID. And so if the board in their, decides to honor this request and to do the funding, we would have to have a, an agreement drawn up and then that, we would have to be legally recognized under the state before those, those funds could be transferred. So I'm going to stop right there and entertain any other questions that you may have.
Donna, just one last point of order. Just confirm with the board that the nonprofit board members are volunteers and there's no stipend involved in that budget?
That is correct. The bylaws specifically state that the board members do not receive stipends unless they can get reimbursed for travel or things like that, but they're, they don't get paid to serve on the board. It's not like the Board of Directors for a Fortune 500 company that gets lots of money for sitting on their boards. And so this is purely volunteer and they're going to, they might not be, they're, they're not going to be getting paid, but they're going to be doing a lot of work, so.
Thank you, Donna. At this time, I'll open the floor for commissioners with any questions they may have of you.
Yeah, I got something. Malcolm, maybe you can help me out with this. 467, is that 467 acres on that Link Road, 1531 Link Road, Dare County owned property?
Malcolm, you can come up if you want to. I mean, that's, that's the number that comes from the Dare County GIs.
I got 467.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
I know what, that's over there by Stumpy Point, isn't it?
Yeah, yes, sir.
You're going 264?
Yes, sir.
That's a lot of acres. 467 acres.
It's a whole lot.
It's probably not all buildable, but anyway.
No, no, it's not. But the important thing about that, and that ties into the question from Chairman Woodard, is that it backs up to the, to federal land.
Yep.
And so if we could.
You maybe get more.
Get just a little bit of some of that land over there that the federal government owns and cobble it together, you could, you could really have something nice over there with houses, recreation. It's, there's a lot of land.
Over there, no. No, how big's a lot got to be to build a house on it over there? That's under a man's office, half acre?
20,000 square feet because there's not central water over there.
Okay. Well, if we were ever able to get water over there, my only issue is, is with the whole government employee thing. Okay. Every employee, doesn't matter what job they do, pays taxes in Dare County. And I don't believe it's the responsibility of the commercial fisherman to pay for a house for the police officer, nor do I feel it's the responsibility of the police officer to pay for a commercial fisherman's house. Okay? That's my only issue with government involvement in housing to start with. But I do believe people need opportunities. I do believe they need more opportunities. And if there's something we can do at a government level to assist on that, have you ever thought about maybe a land grant program?
Yep, yes, sir.
Where we take that area, 467 acres, let's say we get it cleared, we pay for the clearing with the trees on the property. We get it cleared, we get water there, there's already power there. So, because I know that the landfill now is on that road. So you get water there, you got power there, we get the lot cleared. Why don't we do a program where we just give, like, an employee at the county applies for a lot and we give them the lot? And then they build their own house on it so we don't have a million cookie cutter houses. You could build a whole new community over there with all different looking houses because it'd be the responsibility of the individual to build his own house. And then every house would be different and they pay for it out of pocket. It's completely private, but you get free dirt. You got to apply for it and be a government employee program where you apply for a lot. Have we thought about that instead of building all these cookie cutter houses and costing more taxpayer money? Land grants are opportunities. I mean, my family got them in the 1600s.
Amen, is all I can say, Commissioner Creve. Yeah, yes. We have talked extensively about the land trust. It's a very similar concept. And so again, we have these conversations and we've talked about all of this, but we're just people sitting around a table. We need that, that organized, formal agency that can pursue these. And the nonprofit being separate from the local government may have some more flexibility to do things that local governments, particularly county governments, are, are hand tied under the North Carolina general statutes when they do housing. And so, but we have talked about all of that.
Give them an opportunity.
Yes, sir. Totally agree.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else?
Yeah. Who on the, on the 13-member committee has any experience with building? And I mean on a large scale, these types of projects that we're going to be doing, any basic knowledge, intricate knowledge?
Mr. Matt Neal over here, who is the, who is the mayor pro tem for the town of Southern Shores, will probably be their, their board member is what I anticipate. He is a licensed general contractor. He's been building houses and doing construction work since he was 14 years old, I think, based on the stories that he's told me.
And he's only 16.
Yeah. And so one of the things that we're hoping to focus on is that change in the residential building code that allows up to four units because that opens it up to other contractors. And so it doesn't have to be that very closed circle of large multifamily developers out there. We're hoping to, to, to engage more of the local contractors in it, not just be that. But, but Mr. Neal has a great wealth of knowledge, yes.
And that leads in, what you said leads in, I would love to, if we're going to pay somebody to do projects here, the more money we can spend locally, the better.
I, I'm not going to disagree with that. This is, that's all things that we've talked about. These are all topics of conversations. When I tell you that we spend a lot of time talking about housing, Malcolm and I, and then, you know, when we're going to Chapel Hill, I'm trapped in a vehicle with Mr. Neal and Andy Garman. And so they, we talk a lot about this stuff. And so this is not something that we take very lightly, coming to the county and asking for this money. But it's, it's to the point where if we're going to continue to do this, it needs to be more than the task force. It needs to be something serious.
When we.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Yep. Are you done?
Oh, I'm done. Yeah, yeah.
Before, before I came on board, did we, didn't the board assign some money or put a money aside for housing? Like, wasn't there like the 9 million or?
12.
And is that still there? So is that where this?
12.
Okay. But with that, so if we grant the 200, where's it coming from?
From the 9.
Is it coming from that?
Coming from that pot of money.
It comes from where you say it comes from. It could come from that.
It could come from that.
You could, you could come from anywhere, but specifically, we want it to come from that slot.
Right, okay. And the office space? So we have plenty of office, do we have the office space?
We have.
We have an office.
We have identified an office here at admin building.
Okay. I want to say, just, my point on this is like, I've been coming to the meetings, I've unfortunately been quite overwhelmed the last six months with some stuff. So I've not made it to the last couple of meetings, but have followed up with what's going on. And I feel like from the beginning, when I was coming to the meetings, the one, you know, we represent, I feel like I represent unincorporated Dare. And when all the housing thing was going on, I felt like because the towns were, and no, whatever, they can do what they need to do, they're incorporated, they did that to protect themselves, that's fine. But I feel like in all of that, unincorporated Dare just kind of got a little bit of the shaft because we didn't have one voice for all of those areas in that whole big discussion of everything that was going on. And so when I look at your plan and when I've seen your plan, and I, I really love the idea of this, instead of doing one big development, of doing smaller for house, for, you know, for units under one roof with that change, that I think it's worth an additional investment. I like the direction that it's going in as far as having a unit that can raise money and can apply for these grants. I know that the Cape Hatters Electric Co-op, I'm excited to see Susan on that. She's very pro-community. She's always looking for ways for the co-op to invest in Hatteras Island. And so I, I think that, I think it's a, it's a plus all the way around. I think it's something we have to look at in a different way. And the task force has definitely put on, had discussions in different directions rather than one just big giant development that we're going to put in. So I would like to see, I'd like to see this move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. With that said, you will have your opportunity. I hope the board will agree with the fact that now that the task force has said they'd like two representatives from the Dare County Board of Commissioners and one specifically from Hatteras Island, I will be making that recommendation that you represent the Hatteras Island along with our county manager. So I'll do that later in this, in this conversation.
You have to be careful what you ask from here.
Be careful what you ask from them. Is that, do you have any more comments?
I would be proud to represent Hatteras Island.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I got one. Carson, thank you for your comments. I totally agree with you. You know, sitting, listening, I remember back, if we'd had this put in place, when we originally got the $35 million, it'd have been a total different atmosphere. Things, what's, the work you guys have done over the last few months, it would have been totally different. So we, I thank you very much from the bottom of my heart, all you guys have done and worked hard and so forth. So having said that, I'm all 100% moving forward and giving the money out. And I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
We're still talking.
I know.
Yeah. Well, since he's made the motion, we.
We have discussion now.
We could still have, continue to have discussion. So you're having, you're making the motion to, to approve the, the specific request slide, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
And the vice chair has seconded that. I will open the floor up for continued conversation with respects to the now with the specific request. So anyone else?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Ross?
Lone Ranger here. We started this about six years ago. County manager out and former Commissioner Overman and I, in October of 2019, took a trip to Raleigh to meet with UNC School of Government Development Finance Initiative because we were absolutely alarmed at the crisis in terms of available essential housing for government employees, for teachers, for assistant managers at Walgreens, for people that worked in the fishing industry, the people that worked in the hospital, people that worked at Belk, all of those essential folks that make our county go. And we pursued it long and hard, successfully achieving a $35 million, I don't know if I'd call it a grant, but a directive to create essential housing that could be achievable, reachable by a large number of people because the Development Finance Initiative did a very thorough analysis of available land, of the number of folks seeking housing that couldn't find it. And they estimated, wait for it, that we needed perhaps 1,000 units. We can pull the study and look at it. And again, maybe they're right, maybe they're wrong, but I'm pretty sure the number is a big number.
It's a big number.
Yeah, it's a big number. So I was, obviously, we talked, Donna, and I have the utmost respect for you and Malcolm and the work the Housing Task Force has done. And I thank you all for picking up that mantle to, it was roughly two years ago, was it not, Mr. Chairman, that we created?
A little over a year ago.
January 24th, 2024 was the first meeting and then.
Yes, first meeting was January 24.
So.
It's almost 18 months.
Almost two years, yeah. And the reason was that we were not meeting success in our endeavors. We thought we had a plan for the creation of a particular site with 48 rental units that would be accessible. When you talk about grants, I was going to ask if you have a target number in mind of how much money in grants are you guys thinking of getting? And once you got the money, what were you going to do with it? Were you going to build houses? So you would use the grant money to build?
Well, building is part of it, but I also think that there's opportunities to use that money for, for direct assistance to residents so that they have gap funding or that there's a first-time home buyer purchase program, similar to what they operate at the local, at the state level at the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. So, you know, building this astronomical number seems unlikely because we have a finite amount of land. finite amount of land in Dare County. And so, we have to focus on the smaller scale and the, get down to a more precise amount of units, instead of what was identified in DFI's report. And I also think that, that part of that was, they were so singularly focused on a large project and doing this and doing multifamily, because that's what works everywhere else. But that's not necessarily what's going to work here in Dare County.
And the reason it won't work in Dare County is-
Is because, as Commissioner Bateman said, if, you know, the task force wasn't there leading the charge, there wasn't the community buy-in.
Community buy-in.
Right. And so, it was, it was a for-profit. It wasn't a nonprofit.
Who was going to profit, if you recall?
The two-
With the county?
The two, the two groups that the county was working with.
Right. Right. So, when we characterize the construction of all these homes, because I'm assuming that there's only going to be a small amount, per the plan of, what was it, four units under a roof? Is that what?
That's what the North Carolina Residential Code allows. So, there could be a plan where you had several buildings, but they were four units under one roof, because you take advantage of the residential code. There might be opportunities to do small lots and just have one house and then an ADU. And so, you know, we don't have a specific plan.
Okay, okay.
But we have the idea and we need to develop those plans, but go in a bit of a different direction than what was previously done in the past, because we know that there's been this kickback from the community and from the other governments in Dare County. And so, we're trying to operate-
Kickback is what I would call it, too. Pushback.
Pushback is a good word.
Pretty stiff, pushback.
Correct. Yeah. And so, we're trying to build community compassion and not community contempt, if you will, this time around.
We had gotten contempt, guys. You didn't realize. So, I'm trying to visualize. We build four buildings on some acreage that we have. We donate it to you. The county owns it, give it to you. And that would be 16 units, four buildings, and it would have municipal services, SEPTIC, who, I'm just trying to envision your model. Somebody's got to build them.
Right. So, the builder would get paid for his services.
Would they be doing, would they be earning a profit on the construction?
They would be being paid for their services, but the continuing revenues from those houses, if they were rentals, would go back into the nonprofit.
So, we're on houses, not the four units under one roof?
When I say houses, I still mean a structure. It's somebody's home that they're living in. So, the units, the revenue from those units would go back into the nonprofit.
Right.
If it was a situation where it was homeownership, as Commissioner Creve was talking about, there would be a land trust or a land lease, a ground lease, where I purchased the house, I owned it for however long I owned it, to where I was able to move out. And then, I was capped at a certain amount, 3%, 5% when I sold the house. That would go back when that house was sold. The property owner would get that 3%, but then, we would get the house back. So, it stays in there again. But as part of that land trust-
I bought the house and then I gave it back to you when I sold it?
As part of the land trust, you pay a monthly fee as part of it. It's like homeowners association dues, if you will. And so, there's revenue from the house, but it allows the property owner to still have home ownership. I'll be glad to send you the slides that I have on the land trust.
More complications I want to get into here. Let's stay with the rental units, the four and one roof.
Okay.
What is your target rent that will be charged per unit on a, let's make up an example, a two-bedroom, yeah, two-bedroom, one and a half-bath unit?
Right. So, that's going to depend on the financial package that we have. If it's federal money, then it may be tied to an AMI. If it's not, if it's private money, it can be whatever the board-
For those in the audience, an AMI is the average median income, which is a basis used when developing Lytec subsidies. That is the sale of tax credits.
It's typical conversations in part of any housing program. It's not just Lytec. It's when you look at the first-time homebuyer program that the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency has, they use the term AMI as well. And so, there's some income qualifier there. But then again, but whatever the financial package is, would set and determine where those rents are to some degree. And that's going to be driven by the policies of the Housing Foundation.
So, we really don't know any of those specifics yet?
Not at this point, we do not. No, sir, we do not. I'm not going to stand here and tell you that I have all of the details of the plans worked out. That's why I use the word concept.
Right.
But if we're going to get to the point of having these in-depth conversations, then it needs to be somebody besides the task force.
Absolutely.
Yeah. We have extensive files, calculations, and models.
And I've looked at all of those. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I have. Yeah. And so, you know, I don't think I'm going to stand here and convince you, Commissioner Ross, today, but I'll be glad to have conversations with you offline, but-
I'm coming across as an opponent, but Malcolm, and I would ask you to join in, Donna. Over all those years, would you characterize me as an advocate for a housing solution?
Yes, yes, sir. I would.
Would I be characterized as a blocker for a solution to what I consider the housing crisis in our county?
No, sir, I wouldn't characterize you as that.
So, I want to be an enthusiastic yes. I truly do. And I used those words with you on the phone the other day, because this is something that I know many of us put time. I personally spent about four years, from 2019 to 2023, countless Zoom calls, countless discussions with our developer partners, with Development Finance Initiative at UNC School of Government, models with county manager, at that time, our finance director, David Clausen, really trying to, and I'll use the expression, crack the code here, so that we could produce, help produce, units that were accessible, affordable, that we could get in the ground now, not hopefully someday in 10 years, but now, because we were hearing from folks really desperate for help. And Carson, I agree with something you said earlier, that there are a lot of people, both government and non-government, that support Dare County, that work here, that deserve every shot and opportunity at this. And one of the biggest barriers we found were many of these folks were in an income range that, well, coming up with homeownership for a $300,000 or $400,000 home right now was simply out of reach, which is why our focus was on the 40, 50, 60-unit individual development. And we understood that the need was large. Our initial scope, we were projecting up to 500 units of construction, 400 to 500, if I recall correctly. So, when I look at that, I say, okay, that was not successful. And you specifically said, we're going to pursue a smaller model, where we produce smaller units within existing code. Okay, start small, maybe we can build bigger. Right? So, I'm with your initiative. I'm with your efforts. I am hesitant to say, yep, let's sign up another 400,000 of the county's money, right? Two years, 200,000.
Correct.
Correct. And you confirmed for me that on the Housing Task Force today, there is an elected official from each of the seven incorporated towns.
From each of the six towns, the Board of Education and then the county. Yes, sir. Six municipalities.
Sorry, six. Apologize. Six. I spoke to an official from one of those towns at an event on Friday night, and this topic came up. And here's the, here's the subject I introduced to the individual. How much money are the six towns prepared to contribute toward the startup of this nonprofit agency? And what do you think about the idea of the county joining in partnership, 50-50? The six towns contribute 50%, and the county contributes 50%. And we have shared skin in the game. And we have a united effort across the county, that this is a serious issue, that it needs startup funding. And again, I congratulate you guys for the work you're doing. I have nothing but respect and trust in both you and Malcolm as leaders on this. I mean that. And the response I got was, hmm, yeah, that seems like something we could do. I said, great, because I'm going to hold you to it. So, I want to be an enthusiastic yes. You guys come back and say, you know, the Housing Task Force has this proposal, a financial partnership, where the funding is sourced both by the combined effort of six incorporated towns and the county, 50-50. And that money will be used in the ways you described in the budget. I know you saw, you have a salary there. I'm assuming it's kind of a professional to run the nonprofit, which I understand. I'm not objecting to that. That made some sense. And, you know, maybe then you got me as an enthusiastic yes, instead of a, I'd like to hear more from them, as this partnership and a firm plan begins to solidify and emerge. So, that's why it's probably going to be six to one today. Hopefully, I will be seven and zero. But that's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Heard from everybody, except for the vice chair. Have you had anything?
I'll have your further comments.
I'll have a few comments. And-
Can I add one more thing?
Yeah, you certainly can, Commissioner Balance.
I want to say that the one thing that, when you talk about these smaller units, and I'm representing Hatteras Island, a large-scale unit, like they were proposing down Bowser Town and these other, does nothing for Hatteras Island, because there's nobody even from Hatteras that's going to drive up back and forth when they live down there.
Correct.
So, for me, again, and Stumpy Point and Eastlake, so, I'm encouraged by the fact that we could do these multi-small units in the various areas where that need is there and meet those needs, meet people where they are.
Mm-hmm.
And in doing so, hopefully, if we have to start with government employees and we can house them, that opens up other private rental. It also gives us the ability to hire our real estate, or, sorry, construction companies in those areas under residential, so we don't have to go to the big commercial guys. So, I feel like we're on a right track. And again, I would be honored to serve on that, to represent Hatteras Island, and I would look forward to it. So, I will second Irvin's motion.
All right. Thank you. The motion has been made, of course, by Commissioner Bateman to approve the specific request, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Balance. And the floor has been open. I'll ask the board if any, I have some comments, but if any other board member has anything else to share, please share it.
I thought I'd seconded the motion earlier.
That's true. You did. Well, we got a double second, then. So, Vice Chair and Commissioner Balance. Let me just say this. I, too, Commissioner Ross, have spent multiple, multiple hours in dealing with essential housing, workforce housing. Just to make you aware, because you haven't been at those task force meetings, and you're not expected to attend those meetings. But multiple times, Donna, have I not said the towns need skin in the game?
Yes, sir.
Multiple times.
Multiple, multiple times.
And I couldn't agree with you more, Commissioner Ross, that they need to have skin in the game. I would propose, and I don't want to make an amendment to the motion, because I want to see this move forward. And I think the best opportunity for establishing essential housing and workforce housing in Dare County is through this nonprofit. The prior board, as well as this board, set aside $12 million for housing. I believe we have about $9 million now that we could use, maybe, maybe all of it. I don't know. But I know we've tapped in to some of those funds to do some other things. Correct me if I'm wrong, county manager.
Please correct.
I don't have, we have tapped into those funds and-
Yes.
You have some other things on the table as well, but there is that amount of money available in that fund.
Right. And $400,000 is a drop in the bucket for the next two years. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that if this is approved by the board, that those opportunities in grant funding will carry this nonprofit through. And you won't need any additional funds from us. That is my, that is my hope. I still believe that the towns need skin in the game. I will, like I said, I will not make an amendment to this motion. However, I would, I would hope that we would cap this not to exceed the 200,000 annually for the next two years. And maybe I will make a motion, if this is, if this is passed, that we go to the towns and ask them for 50-50 participation, and let that monkey fall on their back, so that the public is aware of how they truly stand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My objections had nothing to do with the $200,000 as an amount.
Understand.
I know the money is available, and I know it can be there. You're expressing my deep concern and my desire for a successful collaborative effort for this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, let me continue with that, that we will have a representative from each municipality on the nonprofit.
That's our plan, yes.
They need to have skin in the game. In public, hear me out. In municipalities, hear what I'm saying. This is not the first time I've said this. I've said it multiple times at the Housing Task Force meetings. I am pleased that if this board approves the nonprofit, that we'll have two representatives from this board on that, on that nonprofit. I would ask the maker of the motion if he would, in the seconds, if they would include naming the Dare County Manager and Commissioner Balance as the Hatteras rep on this nonprofit.
I'll make my motion to that.
Will the seconds agree to the amendment to that motion?
Second agrees.
Okay, thank you. Okay. With that being said, any further comments from the board?
Yeah, I got, I got a comment.
Yes, sir.
So, Rob, let me just say this. No one should ever question that you're for or against housing, because you've been an advocate for it. I've been in meetings with you about them in the past. You know, you're a proponent for it and have been all along. You're also one of the greatest stewards of our financial stability in Dare County. I served on the, on the audit committee with this guy. And sometimes I go on and on and on, because he's asking questions, but it's because he is a good steward of our money. Having said that, I agree with Bob about, you know, it's only $33,000 per municipality.
No, it's over two years. It's 16 a year.
And they've said no, nothing. They came, they sent these two good people with no
proposal to meet halfway.
Yeah, it's 16, it's 16 for the year.
You know, I could, and I'm just throwing this out there, too. I want to give you the $200,000 for the first year. Why don't we give $200,000 for the first year, and then let them go back again, and let them bring up the second, $200,000 for the second year?
You could get my vote if that's it. You amend your motion. I will not fund it all without their participation from the town.
Donna, would that measure?
Yes. Yes, it will. And, you know, the reason why we're starting with the county, and we haven't made official requests to the towns, is because we knew that there's money set aside for housing. We knew that going into this. The towns are all aware, as Chairman Woodard said, you know, his comments at the other task force. And so, I fully anticipate that the Housing Foundation is going to go to the towns and say, what can you do? This is what we want you to do. But they do not have money set aside and earmarked for housing, and they have to go through the budget process. And so- through the budget process, and so, I anticipate that that will occur once the Board is in place, and as Chairman Woodard said, there, or I anticipate they will all have Board Representatives there, which will be elected officials, and so, they know that they're going to be asked for money.
And you correctly identified it, sixteen thousand dollars per town, per year, for two years, not, not a hundred and sixty thousand, not a million and six.
I'll back up whatever, I was just trying to find a way to work a deal, to make, to make it work so everybody was involved in it. I'll retract my statements. Mr. Chairman, call for the vote. All right. Those in favor of the motion as presented, and I will state the motion, the specific request is appointments from Dare County Board to DHF Board. Dare County approved two hundred thousand annually for two years for DHF operations. Estimated budget included, as packet, DHF will adopt budget and oversee expenditures, operational costs to be used for staffing, professional services, marketing and outreach is directed by DHF Board, designation of office space by Dare County to be used by DHF, and continued use of conference rooms for DHF meetings. Terms set forth in agreement with DHF Board to address transfers of funds and quarterly reporting to Dare County, and the representatives from Dare County Board to be the County Manager and Commissioner Balance from Hatteras Island. Did I state that correctly, County Manager?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign?
No.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're gonna take a five-minute recess. And here's what I propose, Rob. I'm gonna call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order, and turn it over to the County Manager. We're gonna do another little rearrangement in the agenda here. County Manager?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to move items nine, ten, and eleven, those things that were with the Planning Department up ahead of our, what would have been the presentation for item number eight, to help facilitate and get some of the citizens out of here if they need to leave.
Debbie and Sheila, hang on.
You need a motion?
I just need your consent, and I'll do it in that order.
It's my consent, what about the rest of the Board?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, absolutely.
All right, with that said, then, Mr. Chairman, I would move to item nine on the agenda. This is a 2025 amendment to the SUP number oh-one dash two-oh-two-three, and Morgan Potts is here for that presentation. As with all this item and the next item, all of the parties have been sworn, this is, these are SUPs, and these are quasi-judicial hearings, and so, the parties have been sworn.
All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Now, for a change of pace of something fairly simple. This morning, I have for you an amendment to a special use permit for High and Dry LLC. It's an existing group development that is located in Buxton. It is a storage warehouse facility. There already exists two buildings on the parcel, he wishes to add an additional one. It's gonna be an addition on to a building, actually. So, again, this is an request to an amendment for a special use permit to the existing group development for High and Dry LLC. It's been submitted by John Canning. The amendment seeks for an addition to one of the existing storage warehouses in the group development, and the development is located in Buxton. The new structural addition will offer only non-climate controlled units. The gentleman will be, excuse me, the applicant will be getting a recombination plat to be submitted to the Planning Department for approval, because he's gonna have to have that additional acreage for this building. And the planning, the planning board heard this at the last meeting and approved. Recommended approval, excuse me.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is the applicant here? Could you come up, please? I've just got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Couple things, do you consent to the entry of the file and the packet into the Board as evidence in this proceeding?
Yes.
All right. And then, do you acknowledge and consent to the testimony that was just presented by Ms. Potts? Do you consent to the terms and the conditions of the proposed amendment to the SUP?
Yes.
Okay, Morgan, does the evidence and the documents that you have show that what they're proposing meets all the terms and conditions of the Dare County zoning ordinance?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay. And then I would ask, is there any other evidence that needs to be presented? Anyone else that has evidence to, as the applicant, do you have any evidence to be presented?
No.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I would turn it over to you, if you have questions.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll turn it over to the Board, ask the Board if they have any questions of this request. Did you have something, Vice Chair? With that being said, there are no, we don't have any questions, can we move forward?
Move forward to approve the SUP.
Okay, then I'll ask the Board its pleasure.
I move...
Oh, go ahead. No, you go ahead, you got it.
I move the amendment to SUP one dash twenty-two-three, and associated site plan for the proposed addition of Storage Warehouse Group Development be approved.
Okay, is the motion on the floor to be approved by Commissioner Ross, is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Balance seconded. Floor is open for further discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you all very much.
Good luck.
Chairman, that brings us to item ten on the agenda. This is the SUP application two dash two-oh-two-five, Historic Residential Structure Properties Group Development, Inc., are submitted by Tim and Patricia Midget. Again, everyone has been sworn in ahead of time, and with that, no, I'd turn it over to you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Noah.
As the County Manager stated, Patricia and Tim Midget have submitted a special use permit application for their properties located along MV Australia Lane in Hatteras Village. The applicants are requesting acknowledgement of their property as a historic residential structure development. There's two adjacent properties they own side by side, one of the properties has a structure on it that was constructed in two thousand, it's three thousand two hundred and ninety-five square foot, and then another smaller structure on it, which is a one thousand seven hundred and ninety-two square foot dwelling on it. The adjacent parcel has a seven hundred square foot dwelling on it. The applicants in this request are seeking to have their properties registered as a group development. This would, one, acknowledge the existing non-conformities of the historical structures since they were built prior to Dare County adopting a zoning ordinance. It would also allow the applicant to record a plat with footprints, which allowed the individual structures on these properties to be transferred in ownership. There's a site plan attached that shows the proposal, and this, in this proposal, there would be a recombination of the parcels prior to recording the plat that established the footprints. And again, the property owner and his representative are here.
Any questions for Noah?
None of Noah, just, I may have some of the applicant.
Applicant have any questions for Noah?
We do not, thank you.
Okay. All right, with that, if the applicant would come forward.
Good morning, sorry, good morning, Chairman.
Good morning, Jay, how you doing?
Good morning, Board members, I'm wonderful, thank you. Yes, sir.
Hey, I would ask, as in the last one, do you consent to the entry of the file and the packet into the Board as evidence in this proceeding?
We do.
Do you consent to and agree with the testimony that was just given by Mr. Gill?
We do.
Do you consent to the terms and the conditions of the proposed SUP?
We do.
Is there any other evidence that you'd like to present?
None, thank you, but we are available for questions if needed.
Sure. And Noah, I would ask you, does, what's presented to you, does it meet all the terms and conditions of Dare County's zoning ordinances?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and is there any other evidence, anyone else out here that would like to present any evidence? With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll give it to you for questions, if you have questions.
Does any Board member have any questions, or the applicant? I just, I just have a comment, Tim. That seven hundred square foot family dwelling dates back to nineteen fifteen, wow.
Actually, it dates, I think, eighteen eighties.
Oh, wow.
That particular structure is.
Wow, wow. Is that still functional?
It is, and a family's been living in there for, a rental family, they're into pool business, pool service business, it's a single mom, they've been living there eight or ten years now.
Wow, that's cool, cool. That's all I had, anybody else have anything? Okay, what's the pleasure of the Board?
I'll make the motion to approve the special use permit application two dash twenty-five for Historic Residential Structure Properties Group Development submitted by Tim and Patricia Midget.
There's a motion on, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Creefin, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. The floor is open again for further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item eleven. This is a Hatteras Island Reserve Phase Two A and Phase Two B subdivision preliminary plat review, and Noah, I'd turn it back over to you.
All right, so typically subdivisions aren't brought before the Board for approval. The reason this subdivision's before you is that the applicant is requesting the use of common drives or shared drives. This exact proposal of a subdivision was reviewed several years ago and approved by the Board, but the applicant ran into some difficulties in finishing the construction of the subdivision, one of those being the relocation of some crosswalks that were in the vicinity of the air, of the proposal. He worked with DOT, and that delayed the project before he could finish installing the infrastructure. Before that happened, the preliminary plat approval expired. So, it's back before you today. In this proposal, he's proposing it in a phased approach to hopefully not run into these delays that he experienced prior, so Phase One will be lots five through seven, Phase Two will be eight through eleven. They're proposing the usage of, again, two shared common driveways as shown on the plats.
Okay, any questions of Noah? Hearing none, the pleasure of the Board?
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve by Commissioner Balance, is there a second?
I'll start.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Noah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we move back up to item eight, and this is a DHHS presentation for clinical services, and Sheila Davies and Debbie Dutton here for that presentation.
Ladies, thank you for your patience, we appreciate.
Of course. Good morning, still, maybe? So, at the last Commissioners' meeting, you may recall, Commissioner Balance requested a presentation on what are some of the clinical services that we offer. It came up in response to some citizens' inquiries down in Hatteras, and we discussed, we thought it would be a good opportunity, not only to talk about the clinical services that we offer under DHHS in Hatteras, but really just the whole scope that we offer, because what people may not be aware of down there, they may not be aware of up here as well, or in any of our outlying areas. So, I have the pleasure, you all know Debbie, but to introduce Debbie to lead you through the presentation. Debbie Dutton's our Clinical Services Director, and just a phenomenal person, and happy to have her share with you all the amazing things that happen under her umbrella.
Thank you.
Good morning, Debbie, it's still morning time, we got a minute left.
It is, good morning, and it is my pleasure to be here, I appreciate this opportunity, and I can't express how proud I am of the work that we do at DHHS, my team members, the programs that we offer throughout the community. I just am thrilled to have the opportunity to do what I do every day. So, I'm going to get this started. Okay, so, as I'm sure you know, we have three facilities throughout Dare County to take care of our community. Our main office is in Manio, we do have a location in Frisco, and our newest location in Nagset, which is the Northern Beach Office. Community, oops, move forward, Clinical and Community Services is the umbrella for many, many programs that serve our community. The one I'd like to highlight today is our Clinical Services, but just briefly, I want to share with you the other programs that fall under, under Clinical and Community Services. We do have school health as a model for the state, you know that we have a school nurse in every school, which we can boast proudly with your support. We also have a behavioral health program, we have mental health therapists within our department that provides mental health services to our established patients, as well as referrals from DSS. We just started a school-based mental health program this fall, with the start of school, so we are able to offer mental health services to our schoolchildren as well, and that is a model that, yes, sir.
Please tell me that that's really a quiet, sleepy little thing that doesn't get a lot of business.
We will know as the year progresses, we will know, but we've been in place now since August twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth, but it models the school health program as well.
Just as an aside, come back in a few months and tell us how that's going.
Yes, sir.
I'm hoping it's a report of everybody's quietly taking a nap, and we don't have any business.
Now, I'm gonna, sorry to spoil that, but I will happily come back and share the overall data, but unfortunately, all four of our clinicians already are on wait list.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Sheila, I feared that, but thank you.
Let's see, go back to that. We also have the Women, Infants, and Children Program, also known as WIC, and then Health Education, which provides health and education and outreach to the whole community. So, I do, I would like to focus on just our clinical services this morning, if you don't mind. We have several programs that fall within clinical services in order to meet the needs of our community. We have a staff of twenty-six individuals, that includes providers, nurses, support staff for scheduling appointments and registering patients, we have a medical records, a billing unit, we have interpreters, and then we have supervisors and management to help support those programs. We serve anyone in the community that has a need that can be met by our providers and or nurses. We do not turn anyone away, regardless of their insurance status, we will see anyone who walks through our doors. We do take Medicaid, Medicare, as well as several private insurances. We have a pretty even mix between our insured patients and our uninsured patients. Fifty-five percent of our patients are insured, which means they have Medicaid or Medicare, or they have a form of private insurance. So, that leaves forty-five percent of our patients who are uninsured, and they are self-paid when they walk through our doors. Our programs fall, we use a sliding scale fee based on the federal poverty level for each of our different programs, so that will, based on the patient's family income and the family size, that will determine the cost of our services to that patient. I've kind of broken it down there, many, many of our patients fall below the hundred percent poverty level, so we are serving a lot of patients for no cost. Yes, sir.
You're right, Debbie. You're right, Debbie, sixty-five percent, two-thirds, are at a maximum of one hundred and fifty percent or less. What is the federal designation of poverty level? I don't know.
The scales that we use, we are given them, and each of our, each of our programs has a different scale, it's anywhere from a hundred to two hundred percent of the poverty level.
What is that poverty level?
And it's based on family size. It's in my car, I have that information.
Any example? I'm not trying to grill you here, I'm not...
Like, thirty thousand.
Okay.
But, again, I don't know what that family size is, but it's very, very low.
Okay, that's all I was trying to establish there, again, not...
Sorry.
Not trying to trick you or anything.
No. We'll go back, I did want to go back to our insured patients, it's, I think it's notable that thirty percent of our insured patients do fall under Medicaid. Twenty-eight percent of our patients are Spanish-speaking. For those patients, we have four full-time interpreters, and we also contract with a, with an interpretation line, a translation line. With the three locations that we serve, we have six patient schedules between provider visits, nurse visits, lab visits, we provide in-home visits, as well as serving our WIC clients. Many, many times, our interpreters are busy, and so we do have to utilize that language line quite frequently to be able to properly take care of our patients to the best, to the best of, the best that we can. Family planning and maternal health, this is one of our largest programs. On each of these slides, when I go through the... On each of these slides, when I go through the programs, I've got some data for you based on the fiscal year twenty-five with the number of patients that we have served, the number of visits, and the number of services that we have been able to provide. So this gives you a little snapshot of the number of patients and services for just family planning and maternal health. We are fortunate to have been granted a community benefits grant through the Outer Banks Hospital. This provides services for our maternal health patients that are uninsured. When a pregnant mother comes to us to begin prenatal care, if she does not have insurance, she is given presumptive Medicaid. Presumptive Medicaid lasts for the first about twelve weeks of her pregnancy care. After that twelve weeks, if the mother does not, is not eligible for full Medicaid, they lose their Medicaid status and therefore they are self-paid for the remainder of their pregnancy. The Outer Banks, the community benefits grant provides ultrasounds, non-stress tests, and genetic testing that would, would be required for these mothers. And so that helps with that, with that financial burden so that we are able to provide them with the care that they need. We have a breast and cervical cancer control program, which is also called BSEP. This offers free and low-cost services for breast and cervical cancer screening. Again, we get, we have the community benefits grant to help supplement the women who do not qualify for BSEP. BSEP, through BSEP, we are given state and federal funding to help uninsured women, but there's specific criteria that these women have to meet. It could be age-based, it can be medical history-based, it can be risk factors, but some women fall through the cracks and don't meet this category. They might not be old enough to have a mammography or they might have a suspicious lump, but they don't fit into the criteria for state and federal funding. So the community benefits grant helps pay for mammograms, cervical screenings, breast biopsies, cervical biopsies, surgical consults, any other diagnostic procedure that these women need to rule out any unfortunate diagnosis. We have a child health and baby links program. We have a pediatric nurse practitioner who is absolutely amazing and she provides well child visits, school physicals, sports physicals. I am super proud to say that we are able to offer primary care for pediatrics, our established patients. We recognized this as a need several years ago. We have amazing resources for uninsured, uninsured adults, but there were children that fell through the gap. They didn't, our uninsured children had nowhere to go for primary care. They were utilizing the hospital, they were utilizing the urgent cares. So we are now a primary medical home for pediatrics and we are able to provide primary care to our established patients. Our baby links program provides in-home skilled nursing visits to new moms and their babies. This is open to every woman in Dare County, whether they receive prenatal care from us or not, if they go to a private provider. It's open to women who not only deliver at the Outer Banks Hospital, but other hospitals. We reach out to every new mom and we offer this in-home nursing assessment typically within the first ten days when the mother brings the baby home from the hospital. Adult health, men's health, we offer several different types of physicals and health assessment. This is typically for screenings, prevention, and health education. We do not offer primary care for adults because we have those resources in the community that can provide this care for our uninsured adults. But if in the process of doing an annual physical or a health assessment and an issue is identified, we will go ahead and begin the treatment plan. We will prescribe medications if that is necessary and we will make the referral for that patient to a primary care provider so that they can continue with the continuity of care and receive the services that they need. So we ensure that those adults are followed up with any issue that we may recognize. So to reduce the effects of vaccine-preventable diseases, we offer immunizations to infants, children, adolescents, and adults. We have three sources, three funding sources for vaccinations. Vaccines for Children is also called VFC. That is state-provided vaccines for uninsured children or children on Medicaid. It covers every childhood vaccination, whether it's required for school attendance or whether it's a recommendation from the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics. We offer all of those vaccines. So there really is no reason why a child should be unvaccinated in Dare County because we have those resources to get them vaccinated.
Debbie?
Yes?
Do I understand that slide three hundred and seventeen?
No, I'm gonna explain that next.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry. Sorry about that. Three seventeen is another source of vaccines.
Oh, okay.
So we've got, we've got the VFC for children. We have three seventeen vaccines for adults.
I thought the same. Thank you. I was, I was, thank you, I'm saying the only one.
Sorry about that.
I thought you were a pinnacle.
No, sorry about that. That is just another state funding source for adult vaccinations for adults who do not have, who are uninsured. This does not cover the gamut of vaccines that are available for adults and it changes. So it just depends on what the state has available, what the federal government has allocated that we can receive to use those vaccines. And then, of course, we have our private vaccines. We do see children with private insurance, so we want to make sure we're able to meet all of their needs regardless of payer source when they come to see us. Vaccines are also very expensive, so we have realized that some private providers may not carry all vaccines just because of the cost. So we want to be able to be the safety net for everyone in the community to receive the vaccinations that they need. Sexually transmitted infections and communicable disease, we screen, we teach prevention, we have patient or a partner notification, we do partner treatment, all to mitigate the spread of STIs or communicable diseases. We receive reports of communicable diseases from private providers once a patient has been diagnosed or we receive those reports from the state. There are a number of diseases that are legally to be reported to the state and once we get those reports, we begin case investigation, we begin contact tracing, we, certain diseases we can go ahead and treat, other ones we just ensure that the provider is accurately treating and taking care of their patients, again, to mitigate the spread of that communicable disease.
Guys, you gave a phenomenal contact tracing during COVID. I remember you guys had an incredible network set up. I saw seventy, we're not in recess, communicable diseases. Is this a problem? Is this a big problem?
No, so if we go back to the slide.
Yeah, give me context there, Debbie. You've got my attention.
We've got a lot. But of the communicable diseases that were reported last fiscal year, ninety-one of those were STIs, seventy were all other communicable diseases. So that's your Vibrio, your Shigella, hepatitis A, all of the other reportable diseases. And that was, like I said, that's over the year. That's what that.
The word communicable continues to get my attention.
Yes, so we, I mean, we have to track, monitor, treat, all of these. However, our rates that we track year to year, they're not alarming. I mean, they're things that we need to take care of right away so they don't become alarming, but we are not higher than state average or national average with the, with the case numbers that we have in Dare County.
Okay.
It keeps us busy, but, but all is well, yeah. We began a hepatitis C treatment program back in May of 2024. We realized that there is an increase in chronic hepatitis C across the nation and we are seeing it here in Dare County, but there was nowhere locally to treat these patients. We were having to refer patients to Virginia or to Greenville for treatment. So our providers felt passionate about being able to keep these individuals in the county. So we did start a hepatitis C treatment program just over a year ago. To date, we have treated, we have seen twenty-eight patients. Of those twenty-eight patients, eighteen have completed treatment and I am super excited to say that all of those eighteen completed treatments are now, they've zero converted, they have a zero viral load, which means they are cured of hepatitis C and they were able to do that here in Dare County. Five are currently still in treatment and unfortunately, we did lose five to follow-up. Since, since our program started, we have gotten tremendous support from our health education unit to help provide case management for us. Case management can be quite extensive. These patients typically do not have insurance. So our case management includes navigating these patients through the process of obtaining Medicaid. If they don't qualify for Medicaid and were not successful that route, case management helps obtain prior authorization so these patients can continue to have blood work and lab work throughout their course of treatment. And they also contact pharmaceuticals for their patient assistance program to help pay for medications and treatment for hepatitis C. Hepatitis C is a very expensive treatment plan and so case management helps keep these patients up to date. They provide services. The treatment is about eight to twelve weeks. They have to come back to the clinic fairly regularly for routine blood work just to make sure the treatment plan is working, they're not having any terribly adverse effects to the medications. So the case managers assure that the patients are doing okay, make sure they're aware of when their next appointment is and really try to get them in and avoid that loss of, loss to follow-up. So that has been extremely, they've been extremely helpful for this program. Since we began the hepatitis C treatment, we also added two new programs. We offer PrEP, which is pre-exposure prophylaxis for those individuals that are at risk for HIV, to reduce that number of HIV transmissions or new cases. And Doxy Pep, which is post-exposure prophylactic treatment for those individuals that are at high risk for gonorrhea, syphilis, and chlamydia. So we want to keep those rates down and protect our community as best we can. And finally, we offer lab services to the community. We are a collection site for specimens. If an individual has a primary care provider, let's say in Virginia, and they don't want to go back to Virginia just to have their blood work done, they can come to us with a doctor's order. We draw what is requested by the provider, we contract with LabCorp, send those specimens out. LabCorp sends those results directly to the primary care provider who then communicates that to their patient. So we have been able to serve over four hundred and fifty people the, the last fiscal year just by being a collection site for them. So hopefully that has been able to help them not have to leave the county. All of these services, we provide at all three of our clinic locations. And again, I'm just really super proud of what we do and what we're able to provide and how we're able to meet the needs of the community.
Great work, ladies. Great work. Any questions of the ladies?
No, but I would say that that lab piece is huge for people, like you said, that have a primary care or a specialist that they're seeing in Greenville and they wanted labs and they can just go right to Frisco or one of our offices and take care of that is huge. It's a huge, especially for some that don't have transportation.
That's right.
So getting a neighbor to drive them down the street's a lot easier than Greenville. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll stand before.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ladies, any, Sheila, any, anything trickle down from the shutdown that's affecting y'all yet?
The biggest impact that we are working on addressing right now is notification about a threat to our Women, Infant, and Children Program, one of the programs Debbie mentioned. The state notified us late last week that they only have about two weeks of funding available to provide to us. So we've been working on numbers. We've been contacting our WIC clients to say, make sure you utilize the benefits you have now to get your formula and your nutrition that you need. And then we've also alerted our partners in the community that if we start running into an issue for any of our clients, our pregnant women or our new moms, moms that are struggling, you know, we put interfaith community outreach on alert that we may need some assistance if our funding is not available through the state. So that's the biggest thing right now that we're, we're monitoring and tracking and looking at the difference between county dollars and the federal dollars that come through the state to come for that program. So that is a concern that we're closely watching.
Thank you, Sheila. Debbie, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Tell, tell, tell the better half, Max, we said hello.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
County manager?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, items twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are all sort of associated with our construction projects we have going on, specifically the Public Works Project. To go through these things, one of the first things we have to do to do the borrowing and all that is we have to have a public hearing. And so item twelve is going to be the public hearing that we'll conduct to do that. Once we've done the public hearing and you've heard what, if anything, the public has to say about, you know, what you're planning, then in item thirteen, you're going to go back and do a resolution approving the borrowing and allowing us to go forward and borrow the money. And then when you get down to item fourteen, you're going to actually be approving the contract, the guaranteed maximum price contract with Barnhill at, which is sort of the final step. So you've had the public hearing, you will have had a resolution that says we can borrow the money and then you'll approve the contract and at that point, we can tell Barnhill, get going, we're ready to go. Correct me? As I go through this, you take my foot out of my mouth if I say it wrong, so.
You're gonna have a budget ordinance in the tweet.
Yeah, right, there's a budget ordinance in here as well. So with that said, we would now conduct the public hearing with regard to the Series Two Thousand Twenty-Five B Limited Obligation Bonds. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to that issue? There's no one here. We've spoken with Susan Downenbuck and there's no one there to speak to that issue as well. And so we can now close the public hearing and we would then go to item thirteen and Matt, I'll let you take that one.
Okay, so as Bobby said, the first step is the actual approval of the debt itself. And the first step of that is the capital project ordinance. So the capital project ordinance is authorizing the expenditures of this debt that you will then approve based on the ordinance that you approved. So do you want me to go into the detail of that ordinance?
I'll yield to the board now.
So, well, he's gonna talk some numbers in a minute, but the ordinance is simply the process by which we put the money in the budget so that we can spend it. So when you do the capital project ordinance, then we then have the authority to spend that money once we go through the other steps that we're gonna go through today. I think we're gonna talk to you a little bit in a minute about the amounts that we're borrowing and the, and the dollars that are being used, but that is one of the preliminary steps that we have to do.
And I think the ordering, the ordering is because the ordinance is actually using, setting up the use of the debt proceeds that you'll approve in the next step, so.
So right now, you, you need, you're looking for, adopt the resolution. Is that what you're looking for right now?
Yeah, so the first, we adopt the, the order that you followed in the past is that you would approve the capital project ordinance, which creates the bucket of funds that you will then approve the approving resolution of the issuance for it.
There's two steps here. There's one is the approval of the ordinance and then the approval of the resolution authorizing the borrow.
Right.
So you need a motion to approve the ordinance?
Correct.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Burris. Floor is open for. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Okay. Now, with that approval, we can talk about the issuance itself and the approval of the, what is called the approving resolution. So, when we came in September, there was a couple of things that were open with this issuance. One, the structure of the debt itself, the other being the collateral that we were going to use. So, after an assessment of the market, this is structured as a public sale of bonds, which will happen on November 19th. It will be collateralized by the Manio Public Works Facility. The, in September, the intent was for the issuance to also include the sheriff's CID building. That is moved out because of the timing it would take to get that documentation in place. It was behind what we would need to include it in the issuance itself. But we will cover that in the next session because we have an alternative way to fund it. Is that what you were going to say?
No, we're always going to spend, we can do that.
So, this resolution is approving an issuance not to exceed $47 million, which is less than what we presented in September. If we were to do the issuance as of September 30th, which is the date that we drafted this, that total interest cost would be at 3.92%.
All right. We'll ask for the board's position.
Motion to adopt.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor by the vice chair to adopt. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
All right. So, now, we've got the authority to borrow the money, and we have a place to put it once we borrow it. Let's talk about the contract with Barn Hill that we're moving, what you're going to be approving next if you approve it. The Capital Improvement Committee met, and we went through all of this stuff, and we went through the borrowing, and we went through how it impacted the CIP and so on. And one of the things that occurred, and Matt mentioned it a minute ago, was we had $2 million that we initially planned to put in the project to, and borrow as a part of this. And when you plug that $2 million in, it messed up the coverage ratios. I don't know if you all remember, but sometimes when we talk about the CIP, we give you this long spreadsheet, it's got all these numbers in it, and we have a row of them highlighted. They're the coverage ratios. That's how much money we have set aside to cover our debt. And if the coverage ratio is one, that means for every dollar of debt, we have a dollar sitting, set aside that we could pay that debt off with if we had to. And that's unencumbered money just sitting there that we don't spend on anything else. It's there to deal with that debt. We have a policy that we need to keep that between .5, which is half the money that we need, and one. When we put that $2 million in there, in some of the out years, like in '37, or '38, or '39, that number went, that coverage ratio went below .5. And that's a long time out, and it wasn't a lot of money, but nonetheless, it messed up the coverage ratio. When you pull it out of that, then all of a sudden, all the coverage ratios get back in sync, and you don't have those problems anymore. So, what we did, or what Matt did, is he recommended that we pull that out. We just finished our year-end audit numbers, and we have about $3 million. Is that right, the right number?
This is related to project efficiencies?
Right. The projects that we have, we have about $3 million of savings on. We can use that $3 million to pay cash for that $2 million building. It doesn't mess up our coverage ratio, it gets it done. The second thing is, we're not ready to approve anything on that building because we don't have the final designs on that. Barn Hill hasn't given us a GMP on that. And so, we really couldn't do it now if we wanted to, simply because we don't have all the information. So, the thought was, let's move it to when we start the NAGSET project, put it in that package, and then we'll have all that information, and then we can bring that back to you. And you can make sure you're comfortable using those funds, doing that project, and moving forward at that time. And so, that's why that's not here now, and that's why you're being asked to do that. I don't know if this is the right time, but help me with this if I'm wrong. By borrowing this money, we also will generate interest on that money. And so, you're going to see numbers that, it's very confusing, and I admit to you that it is very confusing. You've got a GMP down here of what?
Thirty-nine million.
Thirty-nine million or thereabouts. You've got a borrowing of $47 million. You're going to see some documents later on that say $48 million, and you're going to think, what in the world is going on? The $47 million is sort of the all-in cost that brings everything together, all the architect's fees, all that. The $39 million is just what Barn Hill's cut of all that is, right so far? On top of that, we have an owner's contingency in there. Really wasn't that big a contingency. And so, that money that we borrow will generate interest over time as we pay it out, but it's sitting there until we spend it, and it draws interest while it's sitting there. That's a little over a million dollars. And so, we took that million dollars and plugged it back into the owner's contingency so that we have a sufficient contingency for whatever might come up during the project. And when you do that, add that interest back in, it bumps that number up to $48 million. So, Rob, you can't go in and say, it's a $48 million project, and divide it by however many square feet and get the construction cost.
Why is he talking to me?
Because that's not how, that's not how it's going to be. But I just didn't want you to be confused as you saw those numbers going forward. The other thing that I just, it needs to be on your radar as we're, you're getting ready to approve spending this money and moving forward to the next project, is we have, and we've talked about all this in the CIP, and we went through it in some detail. But you have other things out there. Understand that you have, you know, your parks and rec plan is out there that is going to require money out there. You've got housing. You had Donna here this morning, you've already spent some money for that. I expect that as we go on, if housing is successful, there's going to be the need for other dollars for whatever it is, whether it's infrastructure or whatever goes on as we move into the future. Be aware that, you know, we have to plan and think about that. And then, finally, if nothing else, the last two weeks have really at least picked my concern about our, the size of our storm fund. And we had some conversations in the CIP about that. We keep about a million dollars in that storm fund. We had Matt run some numbers on our storms, the bad storms, the Isabels and the Irenes, their 15 to 17 to 18 million dollar costs storms. In the past, FEMA reimbursed almost all of that, all but a few hundred thousand dollars of that. Right now, we're not sure where FEMA's going. We're not sure what the FEMA formulas are going to be. We're not sure how, how much money you're going to be able to get, and so on. And we're not sure what the eligibility, what are they going to do about the thresholds to make you eligible for that? We don't know any of that yet. We just had a couple of storms. The first one, we engaged our contractor to pick up the debris. That was really the only recovery cost that we had, and it was minimal. You know, it was less than $25,000. We've got our contractor coming back for what's occurred over the last week or 10 days. We've got a not-to-exceed price of about $250,000. And so, those, for the people that got damaged and all that, this is a big deal, and please don't read this as minimizing it. But when you look at what's happened there, that is about a mile of problems that, when a real hurricane hits, is 75 miles of those kinds of problems. And so, that million dollars of storm fund, who knows? You know, that doesn't go very far without the FEMA reimbursement that we would normally get. We then had Matt run, what are the averages if you take out Isabel and Irene? And those averages were about $5 or $6 million. And so, for the norm, normal, the storm that isn't an Isabel or an Irene, it usually costs about $5,000 or $6,000. And so, the thought was, do we take, we've got these pots of money out here. We've got one pot of money that we're going to use for the Rodanthe EMS station, that's about $10 or $12 million. And there's another pot that's, that we had at one time for that housing contract that fell through. So, that's sitting there as undesignated money as well that we can use. Do we take some of that money and put it in a storm fund, just to be sure we've got sufficient money available to deal with whatever might occur should we have, you know, a significant storm that would do something on a scale much larger than what we've seen in the last few weeks? Putting it in the fund doesn't mean that for the rest of your life, it has to be in the fund. It means it's sitting there, it's available for us. If, when we find out what the FEMA rules are and we see what they're going to be, we don't need it, we can always take it out of the fund. And if something were to come up that was a higher priority than having it in the fund, you can always take it out of the fund to do whatever that high priority is. But again, it would give us a place to go to do it. My concern is, we've got all these demands for money. I really am concerned if we were to spend all of those excess dollars that we have, then we wouldn't have anywhere to get that money from to put in the fund. So, I'd like to put it in there, sit it there, hold it. If you all decide there's something that's a bigger need than that, you can take it out, but in the meantime, we have it. And then, as we're looking at these other funds, they're reduced by that amount of money, and that's what we have to spend. So, at the end of all of this, I'm going to ask you to come back to that and give me guidance, and if you agree with what I've said, then approve doing that. If not, then so be it, and we move on. But I just, I did want to bring all those things up to let you know what's coming in the future. I will say that the Capital Improvement Committee approved, went through all this in some detail for a couple of hour meeting, and approved all of this. And so, their recommendation is that we move forward as planned. Matt?
Yeah. So, this vote is for, as Bobby mentioned, the Barn Hill Guaranteed Maximum Price Contract, which is that $39,173,217. As, you've already approved just over $4 million, which was the design and pre-construction cost of this project. So, the other things that Bobby mentioned are tied to the owner's contingency and the owner's cost of the project. So, in approving this, you'll have effectively approved the entire Public Works project.
Any questions, Matt? Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chair to approve the capital improvement ordinance, and then approve the Barn Hill Building Group LLC Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment, and authorize the county manager to sign the contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Burris. Floor is open for further discussion.
The movement of funds to the storm fund will be a separate motion.
Yes.
I was, I need to talk to you about debris cleanup on my agenda, and I think I'll just, if it's, it's maybe better to have that conversation then.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyone else? Those in favor of that motion, then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Matt.
Next, Mr. Chairman, we have the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have the approval of the amendments, we have the tax collector's report, we have a public works easement, we have a budget amendment for the Bright Ideas Grant, we have a resilient coastal communities program resolution, we have a communications, Motorola Solution Service Agreement, we have the Defenders of Wildlife Capital Projects Ordinance Amendment, and the North Carolina Governor's Safety, Highway Safety Program, a local government resolutions. Grant applications to the OBX Community Foundation for the American 250 Fair, we have Health and Human Services University of Utah Software Transfer Agreement, Health and Human Services, the Public Health Opioid Settlement Fund Resolution for FY '25 and '26. And finally, the Health and Human Services Public Health Division Breaking Through Task Force for Public Awareness Campaign to Address Community Mental Health Grants.
Is there a motion to approve? Okay, a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice chair. Floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
That brings you to your board appointments. The first one is the Fedsenden Center Advisory Board. Ian O'Neill's term expires this month, and he wishes to be reappointed. Megan Byatt's term expires this month, and she does not wish to be appointed. The advisory board recommends that Scott Romig be appointed to fill Ms. Byatt's seat.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the person that there is.
And how about Mr. O'Neill as well?
And to reappoint.
Got you. All right, is that a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice chair. Motion's made by Commissioner Balance. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And next is your Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Eva Anderson, Paul Pollak, and Shannon Glazier all have terms expiring, and they all wish to be reappointed.
Motion to reappoint.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the vice chair to reappoint. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Burris. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next, you have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. I'm sorry, next you have the upcoming board and committee appointments. In November, you have the Older Adult Services Advisory Council with one term expiring, the Veterans Advisory Council with one term expiring. In December, you have the Equalization and Review Board with five terms expiring, the Special Motor Vehicle Valuation Review Committee with three terms expiring, and the Tourism Board with six terms expiring. And then, in January, you have the Working Waterman's Commission with one term expiring. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. That brings us to item 17. That's Commissioner's business, county manager's business. And I have a feeling that the county manager has several items that he would like to discuss.
How did you know? Well, let's step back to where we were. We talked about the storm fund. We, with the weather that's coming, we, the, we had the debris contractor down Friday to take a look, give us some numbers, give us some not-to-exceed numbers. And he came back today with those numbers, and Dustin, you're still here. I think the not-to-exceed was 200, 200,000. And so, he'll pick up the debris not-to-exceed. Our intention was to wait until the beginning of next week to do the pickup, to give the week for everybody to get everything out, to give the association the weekend to do whatever they were going to do. But with the bad weather coming, the concern now is, we've got all this debris piled up. Is that bad weather going to now string it back out again and create a problem? And it doesn't, and, you know, is the association even going to have an opportunity to get out there and work anyway? So, we've asked the contractor to come in on the 8th. Which day is that?
Wednesday.
Starting Wednesday, and pick up on the 8th, 9th, and 10th, and try to get all this debris out of here before the weather comes. I'm saying this now to make it public. They're going to get with Dorothy to get something out. The idea, let's get those contractors in there to get finished taking the debris that's there now and get it to the road so we can get it out. And then, we'll deal with the weekend on Monday. We'll see where we are. If there's more houses and there's more debris, then we can get the contractor to back down here. His mobilization fee's only a couple of thousand dollars, so it's not really expensive for him to go and come back. And so, if we need him, we can always bring him back if we have damages that occurs over the weekend. And hopefully, that'll be the best way and to get this debris up and to get it up now before it gets, again, strung out even further.
So, are we, are we saying that the private contractors will have the bulk of those seven properties cleaned up by Wednesday?
We're hoping that they're going to have it out on the road by Wednesday, yes. And that's part of the point of this, is to let everybody know, to make it public. We'll get the word out as well to let everybody know. Because if they don't, then we're going to have a really big problem. We're going to start all over again next week.
Right. They've actually, Dustin, they've actually started, those private contractors have actually started moving, right?
Yes, sir. I was down there last week, first couple of weeks, old dump trucks were being taken from the rideaway. In the rideaway of Old Lighthouse. So, yeah, there is a substantial amount of debris. I talked to Mr. Brian Harris this morning about it. He's going to send me some pictures of what it currently looks like in the rideaway. I'll provide that to our contractor, and we'll get things moving hopefully sooner rather than later.
Out of curiosity, I was down Thursday and Fri- Out of curiosity, I, I was down Thursday and Friday and there's some heavy debris.
Yes, sir.
I'm curious how those private contractors got in there to pick that stuff up. Because there's some maneuvering that they had to do to pick up that heavy stuff.
When I was down there, I saw some mini excavators going in, some skid steers and some really heavy duty equipment that they were utilizing to pull and drag some of the larger pylons and some of the houses I'd been on. And then there was some assembly line, if you will, going on to get it from the beach to the right of way. But they were using heavy equipment.
Okay, okay, good. All right, well, I'm hoping they can get the bulk of that cleaned up by Wednesday.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. And then in that same vein, I'll come back to the, the storm fund. This, what I would be asking is you to authorize me to move $5 million out of those other funds into the storm fund to be there, to be available should we need it. And again, with the caveat that it's not etched in stone. You all have the right to move it out of there if you think you need it for something else.
Let, let me play devil's advocate here a little bit.
Sure.
And you, I think you've pretty much given me the reason for let's do this now rather than later. I'm just curious of the urgency of moving that five. I sensed from you that the board may have some other needs for that and rather than take that money for those other needs, we need to move this 5 million as much, as quickly as we can. I know we can always move it back, but that eliminates, that takes that 9 million pot now down to four.
Well, you're, you are being pushed, as you always are, to smith money to do things. I mean, and they're good things. I'm not, that's, that's not a bad thing that people ask the county for money to do things that are better for the community and.
But for the most part, the things that we're asked, we're able to do it under the contingency.
Right, well, the, the things you're getting, when you start looking at the rec plan, when you start looking at housing, when you start looking at other bigger ticket things, now all of a sudden, you're not talking about things that we can do out of budget. We're not talking about things you can do out of the contingency. We're not putting, you know, a swing set out or something like that. We, you know, these are big things. And so I guess my only point is we need to put that aside to be sure we have it. And then we can look at what we have left when we start setting priorities among all of these other demands that are going to come to you over time. That number's not factored into those demands that you get.
I understand, I understand. I just, I want us to have the flexibility though, you know. I, I'm not opposed to moving that. I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping this is talk from the current administration. But they're, you know, basically what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, they want to do away with FEMA, but they want to do away with it from the standpoint that they want to move it to the state's authority rather than the federal's authority. And, and that's where the controversy comes in. I, I would, I would find it hard to believe that they're going to do away with, with the, with those funds. What I'm hearing is they want not to necessarily do away with the funds, but to put it into control of the states as opposed to the feds.
I've heard that as well. And the only other thing that's out there is they're still debating over, at least from what we're hearing, what are going to be the criteria? Right now, there's, to get a declared storm and get a FEMA reimbursement grant, you got to meet some criteria level of damage.
Right.
There's talk of increasing that damage level to a higher level. Similarly, let's just say you meet that higher level. There's also talk about what percentage cost share are they going to have? I mean, how, are they going to pay 100%, 50%, 25%? All that stuff is being worked through and we don't know what that is. You know, everybody seems to think that there's going to be some FEMA money out there in the future, but nobody knows how or if or what that amount would be. And so again, while we have the ability to create the fund, I want to create the fund so that we're ready if we need to be ready.
Right.
And not scrambling to figure out what are we going to do should, because right now it's taken us sometimes as much as two or three years to get our reimbursement. So we have to front those dollars upfront.
Do we, Matt, do we know, do we know what that current level of threshold was to meet before we got FEMA funds?
Well, the million dollars is based on, there's a, and you'll, this is where you'll help me with my foot in my mouth, but I, the million dollars is based on a state level first, so.
What he's asking is what, what, what does it take to get a declaration? What level of damages do you have to have to become eligible for FEMA funding once you have a declared storm?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that specifically.
And I know they want to raise it, but I mean, we've been fortunate in the past to be able to, on three or four occasions, to be reimbursed from a named storm where we do a pre and a post survey and we're, we're able to apply to get the, the difference between the pre and the post. And I was just, we've been very fortunate to get those funds, but I was just curious what the threshold.
But here's the issue. In a declared storm where you're getting FEMA funds, they're using damages from the whole state. They're not looking at just Dare County. They're, they're aggregating damages. And when you, when the state level of damages gets aggregated to the threshold, then everybody gets it. And so that's fine, that works well.
Yeah, it works well when we have a hurricane.
But when we have these small storms where the damages are just us.
Right.
And they're not then declared storms and we can't have anybody aggregate with us. We can't meet the thresholds. And so that becomes paid out of pocket.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not opposed to moving it. Did you have a question?
I do. What is the single factor that prevents us from having the highest possible credit rating, Matt? Risk of storm.
Right, that's the.
With, with a replenished or an enhanced storm fund, does that help to address that concern on the part of rating agencies?
I mean, I'm going to literally meet with them in the next two weeks for this next issuance. And we've been all over TV. So it wouldn't be terrible to say to them, we're, we proactively.
Right. And do we consider it valuable to have the AA plus credit rating we have today?
Yep.
Okay.
Good, thanks.
That's a good point.
Great point. So, do you need a motion?
I do. A motion to move $5 million. Is that what you're asking?
Into the storm fund. Out of the, out of the $12 million, the $9 million fund that we have.
Right.
So moved.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Balance. It's been seconded by the vice chair. Floor is open for the further discussion.
I'll say that, you know, one of the things that's from being gone, I've been gone through storms for 27 years here and I've never left. And the, the fact and the ability of the county to come in and not have to wait for those FEMA funds to be able to take care of the people that we represent is huge and it's a huge plus. So I, like, this is, I think this is a really great thing. And to Rob's point, to give us a, a boost on our, our credit rating as well is just another bonus. So thank you.
All right. Any other, any other comments? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Bobby, let's take a minute before you get to your next item. I'd like the public to be aware of, because we've heard some comments from our residents on Hatteras Island about why we're not using local contractors to clean up. And I know why we're not, but I'd like for you to explain the process because if, if, I, I just want our folks on Hatteras Island to know that we're not avoiding them or not, not looking out for their folks that do storm removal. But there's a reason because, and I know what the reason is. How about explaining to the public and the rest of the board why?
Sure. About every five years, Dustin?
Yeah.
About every five years, we put out the bid, a debris contract. And we do that and give whoever wants to bid on it the opportunity to bid on that debris contract. We do that for a number of reasons. We do it for one reason because if we got a declared storm and if FEMA was going to reimburse us, then FEMA would require that. And when a storm comes, you don't have time to bid. You can't have a storm and then wake up the day after the storm and says, okay, now we're going to let bids to clean this thing up and wait 30 days to get all the bids in and all that and just sit on your hands for 30 days while you're getting the bids in. And if you don't bid it, then FEMA's not going to reimburse you for it.
Right. So, and to say that we're required, the government's required to put it out for bid.
To get FEMA reimbursement.
Right.
And so, and so we bid it and we bid it. And then when we have a smaller storm like this one, we still have somebody in place that can act right now. As quickly as we ask them to act, they can act and start cleaning up. And once again, we're not waiting. Just take what we just talked about. If I had to wait 30 days from last Thursday or Friday and bid this thing out, we would have, who knows what the weather's going to do in the next 30 days and what's going to happen to all that debris in the meantime? And how do we ever get it cleaned up? We can't wait for that. And so we do this annually. And if, and I get the local people want to do it. If they want to be engaged in that, then every five years when we do this, they can certainly bid on it and if they get the bid, we, we do that. We did a similar thing for large item pickup. That's who we're using now is the large item pickup guy. We're not using the big national multinational company. But when we put that out to bid, the company that's doing it now is the company that won that bid. And if there are companies locally that, you know, have the ability to do large item pickup and they wanted to bid on that, when we bid it again, they have the right to bid it. But we're going to put them in place ahead of time so that we can act immediately when these things occur. And that's the purpose of bidding.
Thank, thank you for doing that, going over that, Bobby. Appreciate it.
All right. Mary Ellen, I don't know if I'm stepping on your, what you've got to say or not, but I was going to talk for a second about daycare. So down on, on Hatteras Island, the daycare center down there has announced their intention to close. And, and Mary Ellen has been working really hard with the residents down there, with the Children Youth Partnership, with our Health and Human Services folks, trying to find a way to solve some of the problems that those folks have down there. And the communities come together and come up with a pretty novel approach that if it works will be a, a nice model for people to follow. I'm not going to go into all the details about that approach, but it, it can work and, and it appears that the parents are committed to it. It requires their involvement. And so one of the things we needed was time. We needed some time to get that nonprofit that they're doing organized, to get their, everything organized. This was supposed to close in October. We contacted them and graciously, they agreed to hold it open till I think December the 19th, just before Christmas. However, in order for him to convince his workers who had already told they were going to close down to stay on till the 19th, he had to pay him a bonus. And that bonus was about $3,000. Now, he's agreed to reopen whether we do this or not, but he asked me to please ask would it be possible for us to reimburse him that $3,000 to get it open? He, he wanted to help the community, but he didn't really want to pull that out of his wallet either. And so I told him that I would come before you today to ask for that approval. I think it's money well spent for those families and so I don't have any issue with it, but I can't do it without your permission.
Floor is open for discussion. Commissioner Balance, you have any thoughts about that?
I, I struggle with, a little bit with giving money to a, a business from government. But I recognize that these parents and the families are struggling. So I would say I'm in favor of it just for that purpose, just so, to take a little burden off of the family.
Do you anticipate this being a one-time request?
He's closing the 19th. That's.
That's done.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
There's no more.
Well, then it's one-time request.
The one-time request. I wouldn't approve it, I wouldn't ask for it again.
I mean, I, I share your sentiments, it's, it's hard to give.
It's hard to.
To give tax money back to a, you know, a, a, a business.
I don't can.
Well, I mean, I say that, but we did the same thing in COVID. We did the same reason in COVID.
Exactly, exactly. And, and I was getting ready to, to say that as well, so.
Were you thinking, taking this from the contingency?
Yeah.
I'm going to make a motion we do it.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman.
I'll second that.
That we do it. It's been seconded by Commissioner Balance. Once again, the floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, the one you asked me to bring up this morning is to support a resolution in favor of, to the legislature to fund the ferries at the current funding levels, irrespective of whether they pass a budget or not, so that the ferries can operate on a normal schedule. Did I say that right?
Yes, sir, you did.
And so the chairman asked me to ask you all for authority for him to sign a resolution of that effect.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the vice chair, seconded by Commissioner Creef. Floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
All right. One, Fannie Mae owns a lot in, on Coler 23039, Coler Drive. I say they own a lot. I think the lot is underwater. It's a washout lot on our tax books. There's no house on it. There's no value assigned to it. I talked to Dave Halk a little bit about it. He, he doesn't even believe that the lot is even there. He thinks the, the whole lot is eroded. It's hard to tell looking at a survey and they haven't had a survey. The long and the short is Fannie Mae has asked, would we agree to allow them to donate that land, if it exists, to Dare County for the sole reason so they can take it off their books? They don't want some piece of land that they own. They don't, they're not in the land owning business. And I mean, I don't have a problem one way or the other with it. Again, I don't think that it, it looks to me like the cul-de-sac at Coler Drive is just about gone, if not gone. And this house adjoined that cul-de-sac. So if the cul-de-sac's gone, then the lot is gone as well.
Coler in Hatters?
Coler, in, in, in Rodanthie, in Coler Drive.
Oh, there's a Coler in Hatters.
Maybe it's in Hatters. I think it's in Rodanthie.
Yeah, I think it's one in, uh, Merlot Beach.
Okay.
So, but I can't accept that without your authority.
Pleasure of the board.
Yeah. I, I don't have a problem with that. I'll second it.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Balance, seconded by a vice chair. Further discussion?
I've got a long list. No, I don't have any questions.
I know I'm seconding, but let me get this straight. This would be a donation to the county, there's no monetary money back.
Right.
It doesn't exist.
Correct. You're right.
I like, I like imaginary lots.
Those, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then the last thing I have, we own a lot on Collington Road. That lot, we've owned it for a while. It's been there. One time we were going to put a water tower there. We, we didn't one time. There was some talk about doing it for other purposes, but it's really the only property that we own in that area. I talked to Jessica at the water plant last week, you know, did we still plan to put a tower there? She said no, but there's the possibility that we might need to put a, a structure there, a building there, office there, or a pump station or something in that area in the future.
Or it could be a small density housing unit for the housing task force on that property.
It'd be, it'd be small.
Really small.
We've shifted strategies to the smaller unit from the large structure.
I hear you.
I didn't want that to be overlooked.
We got a request from the adjoining property owner that is a church that owns the property next door. They want to buy it from us to make a parking lot. And again, given that it's all the land that we have in that area and they're not making more land, I'm thinking we probably should not do that and keep it. But I told him I would bring it before you to get your thoughts.
If that's a potential need down the road, I don't know that we want to sell that.
Yeah, I agree.
How big is it?
Hard to say. The whole parcel's several acres, but there's lots of wetlands on it.
I don't, I didn't go out and try to do a delineation. Big enough to put a water tank on.
Yeah, this is a separate priest property than what the sheriff's office is on.
Yes, it's vacant right now.
Yeah, it's vacant.
It's right in between the storage, the storage units as you come around the curve. You've been on Collington Road.
Got you.
You need a motion? You need a motion? You need a motion if we want to sell it. If there's no motion. If we don't want to sell it.
Correct. If, if we're not interested in selling, I don't need a motion. So if I don't hear a motion, I know we're not.
All right, thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Okay. And then that's everything that I have on my agenda.
You sure?
I'm, I'm sure, yes, sir.
All right. That brings us to our Public Information Officer, Ms. Hester. What do you have for us today?
The thing.
Oh, you're kidding me?
No.
Not even going to talk about Georgia beating, winning?
No.
All right. Matt, our finance director, you have anything else for us?
Nothing else.
All right. That brings us to Commissioners Business. Commissioner Creef, would you kick that off for us today?
Yeah, sure thing. Obviously, in the last month, there's been a lot of stuff happening in, in the country. Obviously, political violence is a new all-time high. I would just adhere to everybody on both sides of the aisle, no matter what your politics are. There's things bigger than this. I think country above all else and family. And every, all of us have families and we all have things we believe in. And we just got to do better. And this, it's the first generation that's grown up from start to finish in the internet era. It's an unprecedented time in not just American history, but human history, where everything's at the tap of a finger. And I think one of the negatives from that is the dehumanization process of the everyday conversation with people. Everybody likes to do it on here and now, on that phone, instead of having conversations and getting to know one another. And I think we just need to do better at that. I had a preacher tell me one time, he said, there's a lot of evil in the world. He said, evil in the world is not a proof that God doesn't exist, quite the contrary. Because without evil, you couldn't possibly have a good. I think we can change that in Dare County and across the country through one random act of kindness at a time. Love God and love your neighbor. It's what I believe in. The other day, I rode by a business here and they had some little American flags out front of the business. And two of the storm, they ripped off and they were laying there in the grass, three of them. And I had hog ring pliers and rings in my truck. So I pulled over and I grabbed them little flags and I ringed them flags back to them poles, one ring at a time. What I ask the American people and what specifically people in Dare County is, we need to build our country back one ring at a time. Be proud of where you are and where you come from. And let's start doing better as Americans to show the rest of the world how to act, not to the contrary. As far as the county goes, obviously a lot of storm damage in Buxton. I per, I personally believe that permanent structures are the only solution. And I'm going to continue to look on into that. Got a few other projects in the county we're working on. Secondly, we got a lot of hunting seasons in now on our local refuges and all. Obviously, our wildlife trails on Dare Refuge are meant for observation, but they're also for hunting too. So be mindful if you're a tourist or somebody that it is hunting season now and to make sure that you wear some kind of visible identifiable piece of clothing, whether it's a blaze orange hat or a vest or something while you're out there on those properties during this time of year. We don't want anybody getting hurt. And with that, that concludes my comments for today.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. Of course, and I agree with you 100%. A couple of, even one or two meetings ago, I brought up the fact that Dare County Recovery Court and Saving Line Task Force was looking at a physician, as well as a psychologist to do counseling, not only inside the detention center, but also with participants of the Recovery Court. The Recovery Court Coordinator, Judge Trevette, as well as individuals within the Saving Line Task Force have interviewed a physician. They've also interviewed a consulting firm or the firm to do counseling and so forth. They've narrowed it down to the two people they want to utilize at the total price tag in a year's time of about $35,000. I met along with Sheila Davies, Wally Overman, Recovery Court Coordinator, as well as the Saving Line Task Force and Sheila's staff. And they so graciously and after hard work came up with all the money that was, we were asking for, except $12,000. Next year, they'll have all the money except $15,000. So the two years, what I'm asking this board and what I'm going to make a motion for is for this year to take $12,000, have the Tennessee money, and give it to, for these two positions. I think it's really important that we have these positions for these guys to work with just because of the fact that it would make the total puzzle kind of come together in the services that we're supplying these people. So I'll make a motion that we take $2,000.
Twelve.
$12,000 and give it to them for this year.
Recovery Court. Recovery Court. Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm trying to figure out how to bundle the money into the salary positions.
Shouldn't Health and Human Services?
Yes, so they're actually going to be contract positions. So if the money would be directed to Health and Human Services, we would put it with the Recovery Court and allocate those to then be able to. Judge Trevette will contract with the two providers and then we would pay the re, it would just, we'll be the fiscal agent at that and pay the contractors. They'll submit invoices. Correct. These are going to, well, they're going to be.
It's through y'all.
No, it's through. We'll have to look at the contract. We haven't contracted yet, but it was going to be, and maybe it's going to have to be that we sign it.
I've got the contract here. Health and Human Services is what it goes through. And you, you signed the contract, Robert Trevette signed.
For the other positions, but this position, we, they were looking at doing it differently. But if we can't do it differently, it was going to be Judge Trevette.
I'm indifferent how we do it. I just was trying to figure out how to tell Matt what to do with the money.
Well, the money, I can tell you, the money definitely would be, we would be paying for that. It would come through Health and Human Services. But we are going to pay it as, yes. So they were going to execute the contract where they say Dare County Recovery Court, the signatures being Judge Trevette and then the contractor. And they were going to send us a copy of the contract and then on a monthly base invoice us.
Dare County Recovery Court's not an entity.
So it's going to have to be then.
It's going, it's going to, we're going to be a 501(c)(3) court.
Well, is that?
Going to be.
Going to be. Okay, well, then, then they could, they would be an entity and they could contract. But until then, if we're going to fund it, we got to fund it through something.
Is that right? If, if the entity, if, I think that's what was throwing me off. So if the nonprofit's not going to be established in time, then it would need to be us and then it'll be a three-way contract.
So Health and Human Services would enter a contract with this individual to provide this service, whatever it is.
To Recovery Court.
Got it.
Or for Recovery Court, yes.
That's how it is. Okay.
Got you.
All right, as a motion.
Sorry for the confusion.
The motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman is their second.
I'll second it.
The second by Commissioner Creef. Floor is open for discussion. I assume it needs obviously a part-time, when you need, just when you need the service called in.
It's eight hours a month for the physician and 15 hours a month for the counselor.
Got it. Okay, good. Any further comments, questions by the board? With that being said, those in favor of the motion, then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you all. And the intentions are to become a nonprofit. That way we can do fundraisers and so forth. So we won't have to come after we get these things going in front of you guys again and ask for those services. The other thing I had real quick is if you ever want to really get some humility, you can join Coach Irvin and Coach Gofar, our little five to nine-year-old kids to run a 5K. They absolutely, it's, it's a blast, y'all. They have so much energy and I'm really.
They run circles around you.
They, they do run circles around me. As a matter of fact, I was, this true story, we were doing this little out and back and coming back and the guy that was, the little kid was behind me, who was probably seven years old. That guy runs like my grandmother. It's okay, good. I love it. Anyway, that's, that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
County manager. Next, next meeting, November, give us a, just give us an update on what's left in the contingency fund. We've been, we've been picking at that for the last six, eight months. And just after this last deal, just let us know what's left.
Are you talking about the unassigned fund balance contingent, or my contingency?
No, your contingency.
Oh, sure, I, I'll give you that.
Yeah.
Couple of minutes, but yeah.
Yeah, I ju, I just want to know where we are. You know, I don't want to get, I don't want to get to the end of the year we haven't spent it. I'm messing with you.
Matt, can you look while we're, while we're talking? Can you pull it up on your computer?
Vice Chairman?
Thank you. First and foremost, I've been down to Buxton twice and it is a phenomenal amount of damage that was done down there. And, and my heart's go out to the Buxton community and a lot of the comments that were raised during public comment. Some of those issues we're already working on. And there's quite a few things in, in the background that we're, we're trying to get done and trying to get some legislation changed on some of the other stuff. So I don't want anybody down there to think that we have forgotten about you or we're just sitting there, you know, sightseeing the damage. We're actually doing things about it. And I just wanted everybody to, to realize that. It's not that you're just, you're just not just sitting back and looking at it. We're actually making some things happen. As far as the Miss Cady and Oregon Inlet, we have just submitted some permit modifications that'll increase the, the amount of travel that we could possibly have through Oregon Inlet and also to ease the operations of the Miss Cady and also to secure a more favorable entryway and of coming in and out through that, through that inlet so that mariners that are not familiar with the inlet tend to stay away from it because of its history. And we're trying to make some permit modifications that'll make it so it'll be easier for people that are not familiar with it to transfer to the inlet as well. Bring your attention to the November meeting coming up of the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission. Blue crabs is on the menu. And they're looking at making some significant cuts to the blue crab harvest. The current fisher's management plan on there were, that is in effect right now on the blue crab, they were trying to reduce the harvest by almost 20%. And with the current statutes they've got right now, they realized they weren't going to get 20%. They actually calculated it 2%. So look out for some major happenings on the blue crab that's coming up in November. And the best part of any commissioner's meeting, meet our pet of the week.
Our pet of the week this week is Nola. This sweet girl was surrendered into our care due to no fault of her own. Her previous family adopted her as a puppy, but now realized they don't have enough time for her. Nola is an active dog who loves the outdoors. Her favorite game is fetch. She loves the water and gets along with other dogs. If you're looking for a dog always up for adventure, Nola is your girl. To adopt Nola or foster one of our other animals, come visit us Monday through Friday at our shelter located in Manio. For more information, visit our website at obxspca.org or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
So be sure to go down to OBX SPCA, take, take a look at Noah, Nola rather, and make sure you get her a brand-new tennis ball and have some fun with her and take her home. Give her or any other pets there a forever home. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Can you take a look at Noah too?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we got Noah there.
Commissioner Ross?
Thank you. I'll be brief. Continuing on that theme, on Friday night, September the 3rd, the SPCA Animal Shelter held their annual Stand Up for Strays Dinner Event Comedy Show. And I can say it was a huge success. It was at Pirate's Cove, 225 people. They raised a lot of money. We had a lot of fun. And I just want to say it's, it's a very worthwhile event. Hats off to our director, Bill Coleman and his team. It was a great evening, so keep it in mind for next year when you're thinking about what to do for fun in October. And advancing that theme one more time, coming up on October the 24th, ECU Health, the Outer Banks Hospital, hosting their annual Cancer Shucks. It's kind of a low-country boil oyster extravaganza. And again, it's over at Pirate's Cove Marina. And I believe there are still some tickets available, so I'm pushing it hard. OBX Health, it all raises money for cancer treatment. And the last comment just popped into my mind through a conversation with my fellow commissioner, Mary Ellen Balance. The DMV, she illustrated to me when we were chatting recently that if you go online to schedule an appointment to get a license renewal or if you've lost your license or need it, the entire state of North Carolina is no appointments available. How is this possible? I mean, at first I thought, and again, no kidding, I thought you were pulling my leg.
I know.
And she wasn't kidding. She wasn't kidding.
You can't.
So you can't get an appointment to renew your, not the plates, not the registration, but the actual license with your photo on it. And the only option is to apparently show up at the DMV place and wait and hope to God somebody doesn't show up or something.
You can draw a line under it.
Nope.
No.
Well.
That part of, the whole DMV shut, as, the whole website is all messed up right now.
So I guess I'm just saying, I didn't know if you had to do this.
We need to reach out to Paul Towne.
Yeah.
But I would like to understand if there's anything we as a board can do, because I'm sitting there thinking, that's ridiculous. You can't have the state of North Carolina not accepting appointments for citizens of, write it down, Mary Ellen, the state of North Carolina. Anyway.
Say that again.
Say it out loud, Dorothy.
Say that loud so we.
Very clear.
Well, maybe I need to verify that.
So maybe you're making that.
Even if they're extending the dates, if you have to get your, if you have to get your gold star or any of that, you have to go in.
If you have to drive out of state, that's a problem.
Well, you definitely have to go in and do that.
Yeah. But you can't get an appointment to renew, get your, like, nothing. And through a whole, you sit there and hit refresh, refresh, refresh.
You just have to go in and wait.
You, you have to go in and sit and wait.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have time for that.
You go in and pull a ticket.
You may get nothing. You may go back tomorrow and get nothing. You're waiting at the soup kitchen for a little extra gruel and there's nothing left over. This is nuts.
This is what it says.
This is nuts.
North Carolina DMV enacted a temporary moratorium on driver's license expirations due to DMV backlogs, allowing Class C driver's license expiring on or after July 1, 2025 to remain valid for driving within North Carolina up to two years beyond their printed expiration.
So you just can't leave the state.
So you can't leave, again, nonsense, nonsense, nonsense.
We need, we need to reach out to Paul Towne.
Yeah, I agree.
Didn't he just get appointed or something?
He is. He's the director of the DMV.
So he's a big shot.
You're right.
Oh, write his name down, T-I-N-E.
I know.
Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Balance?
First, I wanted to just say, you know, I, much I respect you guys as a board, like, that we can have disagreement and conversation, but respect one each, each other's position. And I just want to say, you know, with this whole thing with the housing and that, Rob, yours and Wally's and Bobby's work and this previous board's work on this housing with all of that, everybody, and the previous board in whole. And I, I can't imagine how frustrating it is to have been to all those meetings and done all those things and then we're right back. back. So, but I just want you to know how much I appreciate your perspective and your experience and your knowledge and helping me understand a lot of the financial aspects to so many of the decisions we make. So I just want you to know that I appreciate you very much. Next, I wanted to just touch on the Buxton issue. I've been, oh, shoot, it's hard. It's hard to watch and it's hard to see and it's, you know, it's frustrating as well to see that, you know, with legislature not wanting hardened structures and you see that their reason for that is supposedly environmental, but then you see the environmental impacts of eight houses or nine houses going down in such a short period of time. And I was just looking at the windy app and it looks like we're going to have 40 knot winds again this weekend. And thank you for mobilizing to get as much of that out of there before this weekend that we can. But I don't know, I don't know if there's, and I know we've had meetings and we've all been on the phone with different people and trying to reach out, but is there some way that we can maybe bring, you know, the state, the federal, us, Buxton Civic, together to start having some proactive conversations about what we can do in the future because there's one thing that's not going to stop and that's Mother Nature. So I think we need to just try to be, if there's a way to be proactive, then I think we need to look at those avenues as stringently as we possibly can. And then I'm going to close with a really positive thing is that I am so impressed with how many employees we have. At 120 years of experience with our county, working with our county with between seven employees, that's pretty, that's pretty impressive and it was so great to see. I kept, he kept saying, next up, next up, and I'm going, oh, my gosh, like, we're doing 10 and 25-year pins, like, that is such a, such a honor to be a part of, you know, Dare County in that we, we get people that want to stay with us and so we must be doing something right. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Balance. Commissioner Burris.
I'll be very brief. I'm really excited about the 50 years on the Dare County Arts Council. I'm on the board there as one of my commissioner board appointments and this, this month marks 50 years for that. Right now, they got a thing going on called the Great Art Heist where all the artists donate the artwork so that all the sales will go to benefit the Dare County Arts Council. So it's a good month for that, too, because it is 50 years. They're still doing the online, $50 for 50 years if you want to donate and the party for that will be this month, too. And all of you should have received an invitation in your inbox, so if you want to join, I think that'll be a good time. One of the first things I noticed when I went to the first board meeting for them is they do it upright. They had all kinds of food and drink and everything ready for just a simple board meeting, so.
They've come a long way since I was on.
But yeah, no, it's, it's been a good time being on that board as well as some of the other ones I serve on. First Friday was a blast downtown as it is every month last weekend. And a personal note for me, Saturday was Mom's 77th birthday, so a big shout out to Mom. I literally wouldn't be here not for you and.
Some of us are in your mom's neighborhood.
Yeah.
Some of us are hiding in your mom's neighborhood.
Well, and I tell people all the time, many of you that heard me when I was talking about growing up here when I was running for office is I have the best parents in the world. I know a lot of other people feel that way, but I certainly feel that way. I've had the best parents in the world and so shout out to Mom, happy birthday. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to have a few comments towards the end of the day. I didn't do this under Commissioner's business, but, you know, I want to give some kudos to our local reporters, in particular, Murray Helen. She has always been there since I've been on this board. It's an unbiased article that she writes every, she just, she writes the facts. It's that simple. She writes the facts. There's no bias whatsoever into what she reports and it's, it's refreshing to see that and to continue to see that. And I just wanted to personally thank you, Murray Helen, for what you do along those lines. Let me tell you why I say that. During Aaron, I was, along with several of my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Balance and the vice chair and the county manager, I was down seven days in a row. Just recently, I was down three days in a row to what's happening in Buxton. The last time I was down there, as a matter of fact, my son joked about the video he saw. We were, Commissioner Balance and I, we were down there and I was doing an interview with CBS National News and a wave came up and the water came flying in. We were all set up and everything and that was all I could do to get out just in time without getting soaking wet. And my son joked on Facebook about, well, you still got the moves, Dad. Where I'm going with this is I did five interviews that day and I'm rethinking what I do in the future. I may call on you guys. CBS interviewed me no less than 20 to 25 minutes, correct, Murray Helen?
Yes.
I watched it on news. We get 10 seconds. We didn't even get 10 seconds, we got eight seconds. They're not concerned about what's going on in Buxton or Rodanthe. I watched them for 10 to 12 minutes filming a house getting hit by waves and finally going in to drink. That's what they're interested in. So I just got a recent request and Fox did the same thing, Fox Weather, two or three other stations out of Raleigh, anyway, I did five interviews that day. I've just gotten a request from Fox Weather because Fox News interviewed Murray Helen and I, not the first thing, but yet I saw another video for seven or eight minutes just waiting for a house to fall in to drink. So Fox Weather reached out to me and says, like to do an interview. So I sent a smiley face back to her and I said, you know what? I'll do this interview with one exception, that you want to hear from a local person or an elected official who wants to talk about the devastation and who wants to talk about the resilience of our, of our residents and who wants to talk about what we have for a plan to help our residents. That's the one condition that I'll do this interview. And if that's not what you're looking for, forget it. And I put a smiley face on there. Well, I hadn't heard back from them yet, so I'm sure, I'm sure by the end of the day I'll hear something, but it's sad, folks. It's sad that we don't have our national news weather stations. They're all concerned about what they can show in devastation rather than what this has done to the residents and how we're coping with it. And once again, Murray Helen, thank you for always being there and always reporting the facts as they are and it's most appreciated. With that being said, County Manager.
I would, I've got, well, I got one thing.
Well, we should have known that.
You said, you said you were done. In answer to your question, you asked me about the contingencies.
I'm messing with you.
The contingency's at 441,000.
Oh, gosh, we got plenty of money there. 441?
Yes, sir.
Remaining?
Far as, far as you know.
See, I'm glad we put that 5 million away.
Thank, thank you, County Manager, I appreciate it.
Thing I would, in line with what you were just talking about for the, you and the other board members, to make your lives easier and not waste your time. If you get calls from the media to do those types of interviews, if you just tell them, forward them to Dorothy, she can then talk to them, what are they after, what are they doing? If she thinks it's appropriate, she'll either get you to do it or get whoever the subject matter is to do it, or she'll send it to me to do it or something, but she can weed out the stuff that isn't doing what it ought to be doing for our purposes. And then she can also then get it to either the board member of interest or if it's something general, then to me and we can help them with their interviews. That is what we've done when we've had storms in the past and been overwhelmed with that and it has worked very well to let her be the sort of the gatekeeper.
Right.
For that. So just a suggestion if you all want to use it.
And you're right, and I'll continue to do them. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to set a new tone with them and that's why I sent that email, I copied Dorothy on it because, and I sent it with a smiley face. And I did it with all due respect. I didn't, I didn't criticize or do anything there, I did it with total respect, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to set the tone in the future for those on the national level that want to interview us.
Just, I hate to keep jumping, but just to commend Dorothy and her staff, we talked about debris pickup, what, 10, 15 minutes ago?
Yeah.
The press release just showed up on my phone, so they're on it and getting the workouts.
Right, absolutely.
You're on top of it, Dorothy.
Chairman, I was going to say, it's, it's always been that way with national media and that's why we, in our office, always want our local media. We make ourselves accessible to them first.
Right, absolutely.
Because they're the ones who are here and will be here the duration. The other ones come in and out really quickly and so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Mary Ellen.
And that's, that's certainly why I wanted to give Murray Helen the kudos and, and I'll say this as well, Mark has done the same. He's done a good job reporting for us, so it does voice. But that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything?
You know what? One quick thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. I know all this is going on in Buxton, you know, we've all been through hurricanes and they, you know, like after Isabel and things like that, it takes years to recover and we've just, they've just surpassed the one-year anniversary of Helena in western North Carolina. And as horrible as it is that what we're going through in Buxton right now, they're still going through such complete devastation. And so I just, just to put it all a little bit in perspective, as terrible as it is for us to see what we're seeing right now, there's other people that are still hurting from something they went through a year ago and that was their homes and that was, like, these are rental properties and yes, there's, there's some devastating environmental impacts in that, too. But just to, just remember that, just to put it in perspective and give a little, and no pun intended, balance.
Absolutely.
I have to agree with you. My wife and I just spent a few days in western North Carolina and they are still devastated by everything that's going on. Even a lot of the roads still haven't been rebuilt. There's families living, still living in tents. I mean, that's the way it is, so.
Well, just, just keep, keep our Buxton, Rodanthe residents in your thoughts and prayers as, as well as continue to keep our Western folks in your thoughts and prayers. And with that being said, I need a motion to adjourn until November the 3rd. There's a motion, a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the vice chair and Commissioner Balance. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.